Welcome, everyone, to the June 3, 2025 City Council Work Session Meeting. Our meetings are public and you're welcome to join us in person by watching from the Council's Agenda page, Zoom, YouTube, or SLC TV. We hope you'll continue to join us in whatever manner you feel most comfortable. This is a work session, which means there's no public comment. Join us tonight at our 7:00 PM formal meeting if you want to share your comments with the Council. Of course, we welcome your feedback also by mail at PO Box 145476, Salt Lake City, Utah, 84114-5476, by email at council comments at slc.gov, or via our 24-hour phone comment line, 801-535-7654. Comments we receive on Agenda items are shared with the full Council and posted on our website, slccouncil.com. The first item on our agenda for today is an informational update from the Administration. And for that, we have Weston Clark, the Director of Community Outreach, and Andrew Johnston, the Director of Homeless Policy and Outreach. Hi, guys. Thanks for being here.
Happy to be here. Thanks for having us. All right, and we've got the screen today. That makes it a little bit easier. It's exciting, because last time I was here, we didn't. All right, let's go ahead to the first slide, which I guess is the next slide, okay? This is, of course, our feedback page where we try to update regularly our engagement opportunities for the community, so we encourage the community to check that out when they can. Next page. We have some engineering updates. These are your construction projects in the city. 21st South update is from June 16 to early September. Eastbound 21st South from 900 to 1100 East will be closed for the final phase of road reconstruction, which includes excavation, grading, paving, sidewalk construction, storm drain tie-ins, and other activities. This closure is needed to provide enough room for construction crews to safely perform their work while maintaining as much business access as possible. Eastbound travelers will be detoured at 900 East to Sugarmont Drive, then to Highland Drive. Alternative eastbound routes include 1700 South and 2700 South. The westbound travel lane will remain open. 1300 East reconstruction, work is ongoing there, starting as early as yesterday, June 2. Crews will close the north side of 1300 East at Highland Drive for six weeks. This closure will give crews the space needed to maintain traffic while rebuilding the intersection. The closure will help accelerate the work in the area to stay on track for the project completion by this fall. 300 North Project, crews did encounter some unexpected soft spots in the road base during paving, so they're having to work to fix those areas before paving can continue between 800 West and 10th West. The project does remain on schedule for completion this August. Next page. Some transportation updates. Livable Streets Program, which is our traffic calming program, continues throughout the city. City is broken down into zones. I encourage folks to look up the zones so that you know where your neighborhood is. For all, for those of you who are following, all the major work is complete in Zones 2 through 4. We're in a final design phase for Zones 5 through 9 and are developing traffic calming plans for Zones 12 through 15. I think I've mentioned this before, but Zones 10 and 11, which are downtown, are on hold because of the major construction projects going on there. 300 West Bike Way Project is a protected bike way on 300 West from 900 South to 300 South to connect new bike ways and existing bike ways. Construction starts early this month, June, and the team sent out an email newsletter the week of May 26 and also presented at the Granary District Alliance meeting. The 300 South to 400 South section of the project has been removed at the request of UDOT. The team is working to redesign the 400 South crossing to get people on bikes into Pioneer Park. West East Connections, this is the $1.9 million federal grant as part of Reconnecting Communities Pilot Program to heal the east-west divide. A public open house was held on May 21 from 5:30 to 7:00 at Edison Elementary School, and it was a big success with over 100 people in attendance. There is an online public survey that is still available for community input through mid-June, and that should be available in the feedback page. West Point Jordan Meadows Byway construction began on that at the end of last month, and construction is going to move north from 400 North. Next page. We've got some public land project updates. The grand opening of Bonneville Boulevard Trailhead went wonderfully, and three more trailheads will open later this summer, Popperton Park, Victory Road, and Immigration Canyon. Exciting news for those of you who have picked up the incredible sport of pickleball. Pickleball courts are currently scheduled to be completed at the Glendale Regional Park this July 2021. Grand opening plans have just begun, so stay tuned for that. And 2025, did I say four? Oh, my gosh. 25. Grand opening plans have just begun, so stay tuned for that. Also, even more ribbon cuttings are planned for this fall for the completion of Phase 1 of that project. Liberty Park Playground, those of you like myself who raised your kids on that playground, just FYI, it's going to be closed for reconstruction July 2025, so you can go say goodbye. It's going to reopen around Memorial Day 2026. Community notifications are beginning soon, advising folks to use alternative playgrounds and other splash pad locations. The Liberty Park Cultural Landscape and Vision Plan, which is part of the Reimagine Nature Master Plan for the Liberty Park Cultural Landscape and Visioning, which will analyze and record the historical significance, features, and current condition of Liberty Park, and will help us guide its future. Community survey for this project will be going live this month, and we will invite the community to participate as soon as that is available. The Mattson Park General Bond is helping Mattson Park get a new playground that will be replaced June 25 through June 27 with ribbon cutting scheduled for the 27 at 2:30 PM at the park. The Rose Park Neighborhood Center project is a project between Public Lands and Good Samaritan Foundation and Wasatch Community Gardens. That project is complete, and the grand opening will be Thursday, June 13 from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at the Rose Park Neighborhood Center. Next page. Couple of quick updates from planning. The RMF 35, RMF 45 Zone merger has been adopted by the Planning Commission, and it should be while here in the Council. The Rio Grande District Downtown Plan and Zoning Map Amendments has been held up by a request from the CRA to consider some modifications, so that still needs a public hearing in front of the Planning Commission to be scheduled later. Housing Stability is still encouraging folks to participate in the community survey to guide their strategic plan around the federal CDBG dollars. So please go to the feedback page and navigate to that. This helps guide our CDBG dollars going forward, so we would love some community participation. That's open until October 2025. Next page. Just a quick update on the beloved Love Your Block program. We just finished an awesome cycle of community workdays and community projects, 17 of those, with 362 total volunteers, 1,140 volunteer hours with over 28,000 pounds of trash removed, 10 repair projects, 136 new features, 13 trees planted, 15 art displays, and two activation events. It's been a great success, and the application process for this next phase just closed. We've got over 30 applications, and so I think we're going to get some strong projects to fulfill on that. Next page. We are in event season in the city, so I've just got some highlights on here from some of the various projects or various events that the city permits for, ACE event projects. This is not a complete list by any means, but here are just some highlights. Of course, we have Pride this weekend. We have Partners in the Park is back. My team will be tabling, that's what the little symbol there by Partners in the Park is. My team will be tabling there at Jordan Park on June 10, and we'd love for you to stop by and say hi to our team. These are our community office hours for the summer we're going to do at these community events, and I will highlight those throughout the summer. Yappy Hour, annual favorite, June 12 at Fairmont Park. The Fit to Recover 5K, which is the last 5K that I ran in, and I did not do well, so maybe I need to try it again. And of course, SLC Pride, capping off the end of the month on June 28 at the Gateway. And that is all for me.
I'd like to insert that Weston beat me in that 5K.
Did I?
Yes, you did. I don't believe you forgot that somehow.
I must have started way before you.
Doesn't matter. Thank you, Council members. This is our homelessness update. The homeless resource center utilization data is out of, not the right dates. That's from the end of May, was 97%. I got the numbers back just a few minutes ago for this past weekend. They're at 96%, so we've dropped a little bit over the last two weeks, but not noticeably. The encampment mitigation work will be focused on Victory Road and Warm Springs, likely Wednesday, Thursday this week if things hold up. And then Rapid Intervention Team will be focusing a lot on the Jordan River Trail from Cottonwood to Day Riverside on the north end, and then Fairmont Park and Sugar House and Gladiola Street in the industrial area. The Resource Fair coming up is on the 13th at Pioneer Park, and the HRC Community Block Party is speaking to what Weston said about this is event season. We will have block parties at the Geraldine King on Friday, the 20th, out in front of that building, and then the Gale Miller Center in the lowest parking lot the following week on Friday. And people are invited to come out there and engage. It's for the community to build improved relationships with those centers, the staff, the residents, et cetera, so everyone's invited. Next slide, please. This is a slide that if you were paying attention, you'll remember from last time we were together. I wanted to bring it up again just to reiterate that there are beds that have been allowed to continue through the summertime that were running in the wintertime, and that our totals are, including the family beds in South Salt Lake and Sandy, at over 1,600 plus beds now. So that's a good improvement over previous years, but it's still not enough, obviously, and we do have a lot of folks who are still in the summertime. Next slide, and the last slide. Summer cooling options. This is a question that comes up a lot for us at this time of year. There was code-red legislation run during the last legislative session at the state level. It did not pass, so there is no code-red in the state of Utah right now. However, Salt Lake County and Salt Lake City both encourage people to come indoors when it's very hot outside, and so the rec centers at the county level, senior centers and libraries, as well as the Salt Lake City libraries, are always open to the public and safe places to be. Additionally, Salt Lake City funds a Volunteers of America Street outreach team. They do a lot of things, but one thing they can do is offer basic needs to folks who are outside, water, try and get them into shelter options if possible during the daytime when it's worst. So if you have inquiries or questions from folks, please reach out to the Hart team or myself, and we can put people in the right direction, hopefully.
All right. Thank you so much for those updates. We'll move on to Agenda item number two, which is an ordinance. Pause, but come on up. I'll just...
We don't have Sarah online, do we?
Okay, no problem. Okay. Agenda item number two is an ordinance for zoning text amendment. Zoning text amendment for public hearing requirements for appeals and variances.
This is a proposal to remove the public hearing requirement in city code for appeals of land use decisions and variance requests. The proposed change is necessitated by House Bill 368 from the 2025 legislative session, which prohibits cities from holding public hearings for these issues. I'll turn it over to Nick.
All right, if there's a presentation, I can get going.
Sorry, just a second. Adobe just crashed on me. It'll be up in just a moment.
Well, I'm going to start. I'll just start talking, and then we can catch up on the presentation. So as Brian mentioned, this is a text amendment that's necessitated by some changes to state code that would prohibit cities from holding public hearings for variances and appeals of decisions. That law went into effect on May 7, so we're already following it. This proposal really is intended to bring our city code up and to be consistent with the state code, so there's not confusion that occurs as we go through that. Okay, if you go to the next slide. This proposal also, you can go to the next slide. This proposal also includes some modifications to clean up some of the, and to clarify some other provisions in our code, but also, one of the key things is because we don't have a public hearing, we do want to have some sort of period for collecting evidence, such a record, before something, if one of these types of applications end up moving on to the court system, which is the next phase after this. So just to give you some background information, in the last five years, we've had a total of 32 appeals submitted. Most of those are actually appeals of enforcement actions. We get about, you can see the numbers there. All but two of those have been upheld in the last five years. Variances, we get very rarely. A variance is actually a pretty high bar and pretty challenging to get. We average just under three applications per year. In the last five years, we've had three granted, so the others have all been denied. Next lap, next slide, please. So because variances are often very, very confused, and the term is used for lots of different things, there's a legal definition of this when it comes to land use, and that's outlined on here. But basically, it's a change, a deviation from a standard, usually because there's something unique or peculiar about a property. It's not something that somebody can use just to get around a requirement. There's five standards that are adopted in state code. The city has also adopted those, plus some additional clarification on how to achieve those. But the important thing here is that all five standards have to be satisfied for a variance to be granted. This image is an example of it in a city where there's a river that runs through the middles of properties. This is a perfect example of something that's beyond the property owner's control, where variances would be appropriate, because obviously, we don't want to build over rivers. And so there's an adjustment to how and where a building could be placed to accommodate that. This would be the process for that. Next slide. There's three, even though there's the five standards, three that are mostly, the highest bar to achieve is that there has to be an unreasonable hardship. That hardship cannot be economic in nature, so it can't cost a lot to comply with city codes, and it can't be something that the property owner created. Sometimes, for example, they may have maxed out their building coverage, and they try to seek a variance for additional building coverage. Well, that's not going to work. And then the other main thing is that a property has a unique circumstance. This is usually like that image where there's some natural occurrence, steep slope, creek, or river running through it. It can also be some other things. Like when the property was created in 1918, it was only 22 feet wide. And when you apply the setbacks, there's no reasonable, there's no substantial property right when that regulation is applied. And so those are situations where these requirements may be appropriate to address. Next slide. Appeals are a little different, so right now, our current code does not require a public hearing for appeals of commissions decisions. That's because a public hearing on the matter has already been held with the commission, and the appeal is based on the record that the Planning Commission reviewed. So there's no new evidence submitted, because an appeal officer can't substitute their own judgment for the Planning Commission. They can only decide whether the Planning Commission or Landmarks Commission applied the code correctly and made a legal and sound decision. So we do, in our current code, require public hearings for appeals of staff-level decisions. That's because these are oftentimes administrative interpretations, enforcement actions, et cetera, where there is no public process for those types of things. And right now, the public hearing has a certain requirement for that. Public meetings, as you all know, have much different public notice requirements. So in this proposal, obviously, we're removing the public hearing requirement for the staff-level appeals. It's important to note, and for variances, it's important to note that, again, Planning Commission appeals, Landmarks Commission appeals, already do not have a public hearing. And then we're adding in a 12-day notice period to create that evidence gathering and to clarify some of the provisions in our code. Next slide. I think that might, yeah. So I've already covered all of this, so I think we can end the presentation and answer any questions if anyone has any.
Okay, any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Member Mano.
I realize this is something we have to do to comply with state law. So just more out of curiosity and for my information, for the information of the public, do you have, Nick, any sense of, like, in the past, when we've had these public hearings for appeals, what are some of the ways that they may have been helpful, and is there another way that we can get that information?
Yeah, so one of the ways where a public hearing is helpful is to discover something that isn't already known about a property that may influence the outcome, right? So appeals of staff decisions are considered de novo. They're like, it's brand new. And so evidence is appropriate to hear. Variances, even though we, right now, our code required, or prior to May 7, our code required a public hearing, we rarely got anything that was useful towards the standards. It was usually, well, we don't like what they're proposing, or, you know, we want to keep setbacks what they are, et cetera, et cetera, and they're not really related to the purpose of a variance. Most people confuse a variance for things that happen, like through our plan development process and design review and other methods to modify a standard, but this is different. It's to ensure that the property rights are upheld and granted, and that we don't create a regulatory taking of property.
Okay, thanks. Is there, and now that we cannot do the public hearings, is there another way that we could get that same level of information for those cases where it was helpful?
Yeah, and that's why we have the 12-day notice period. And then we have, the code allows for people to submit evidence, not just testimony, not just their thoughts, but it has to be evidence. All of that will be given to the appeals hearing officer. There's a deadline to submit it, but that's the whole point of having that 12-day.
Were you allowed to notice the surrounding property owners?
The state code didn't restrict us from that, so we are going to notice it just the same way we notice a public hearing.
We would, okay, great.
And that's written into the code.
Here's how you can provide evidence if you have.
That's right.
Okay, thanks, Nick.
I feel like I've asked about variances before. We don't really do variances, right?
We don't. We do not get many. We get, so we get, just like, I think the staff was just under four per year. In the last five years, I think we've had three total approved. Most of them are denied because they can't meet that high threshold established by state code.
Yeah, okay. All right, I don't think we have any other questions. Thanks. All right, I don't think we have any other questions. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to agenda item number three, which is an ordinance for an economic development loan fund for Hruska's LLC. And for that, we've got Austin Kimmel from City Council, we've got Peter Mikowski from Business Development, and that's it. Oh, oh, sorry. I'm sorry, Andy. We got Andy Feldman online for Economic Development as well.
Great. Thanks, councilmembers. Like you said, this is an EDLF loan to Hruska's, an existing business offering Kalashis. The loan fund committee recommends the council approve a $200,000 loan at an 11% interest rate over seven years. The loan would help create two new jobs in the next year and retain nine existing ones. It would also pay for renovation, working capital, equipment, furniture and fixtures. This item does not require a public hearing, and a vote is scheduled for tonight's public hearing. And with that, I will turn it over to Andy and Peter.
Thank you, Austin. Thank you, board members, for, for having us today. As Austin mentioned, this is a loan for Hruska's, a legacy business in Salt Lake City, with a longstanding presence in the Sugar House neighborhood. They are, we are funding the renovation of their new location on 17th South and 11th East. You may, it may be known to others as the Brownies, Brownies, Brownies Building. We're really excited about Hruska's relocating to this location, as they are a legacy business, also a strong candidate to make that location work. So I'll hand it off to Andy Feldman for any questions about the loan.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Boy.
No, no many questions, but I, I'm excited to see a diversity of businesses come in. And I keep saying this about your department, so you guys are fulfilling the goal that we set from our side, and then some. So we're excited to see how many different businesses are, are qualifying, understanding that that's a lot of work from your department, so thank you.
Thank you, councilmember.
All right. Sorry?
She's there to answer any questions, if, if we have any questions on the loan.
Okay. Doesn't look like we have any. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're moving to agenda item number four, for our fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget process. This is the fire department budget. So we have Michael Sanders from City Council. We also have Chief Lieb, the chief, the department chief, and Clint Rasmussen, the fire financial manager.
Okay, great. Okay, so good afternoon, council. We are gathered here today to go over the fire department budget. So the Salt Lake City Fire Department provides fire medical services from 14 fire stations across the city. And 94% of the department's funds are allocated to personnel. The department currently has 609 FTEs, and this year's budget is not request any new FTEs. This year's proposed budget increases the year-over-year by 0.42%, or about $231,000. Other than personnel increases, there are increases related to uniform allowances as outlined in the Fire Department Union's memorandum of understanding. And I just wanted to note one correction from the staff report. The top of page two lists that personnel services are increasing on about $1.7 million, but the actual increase related to personnel services is $170,000. That was a slight typo on my part. Policy questions regarding the budget are listed on the bottom of page two and the top of page three of the staff report. And with that, I'll turn it over to Chief.
Thanks, Michael. Well done. I appreciate that summary of our projected budget for fiscal year 2026. We have only a couple of components, as Michael said. We'll go to the next slide, please. Here's a summary of our two components. One has to do with the local 81 MOU agreement regarding uniform allowance increase. The other, the second one, is a social work intern. That's just going to be a change to the staffing document that has no fiscal impact. We're going to fund that intern internally. Next slide, please. So in detail, the first is an obligation for an increase in uniforms from $600 to $800 beginning July 1st. That's for each firefighter covered under the MOU. We are requesting $72,400 to support this contractual increase. And yes, that is Pete Davidson in the middle of that picture there on that slide.
What? What, what are the, well. Pete Davidson doing in Salt Lake? And why is he at our fire department?
I don't even know what he's doing in my photo, actually. He was here on some kind of a P, Public Relations event, and somehow he stopped at one of the fire stations. So he's in the white pants towards the right, the center. He thoroughly enjoyed, apparently, meeting with the firefighters and seeing the apparatus, and maybe we can get him back here.
Great.
Next slide, please. Our second component, social work intern. This is an opportunity certainly for the University of Utah. It's also an opportunity for us to continue to collaborate with them. We'd like to, we'd like to partner with the U every chance we get, given it's right in our backyard. The benefits, obviously, to the interns are they get some experience, firsthand experience with our chat team. They'll be deployed down to the street. They'll also do some outreach within the public safety building, so they'll get a variety of responsibilities, and they'll get some really good experience. We expect to rotate that intern, I believe, each semester, so we'll get several people through. And the benefit, obviously, to the department is that, in kind, the university will provide ongoing training and education for our social workers at no cost. So we think that's an excellent win-win situation. We're gonna go down this road and try and develop it, actually. Next slide. That completes our components fiscal year 26. I'm happy to answer any questions, Councilmember Mano.
Just those very long presentation, but thanks for, no, I don't have any questions. Appreciate all that you do for the city and are continuing to do. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilmember Beegan.
Just looking at the policy questions and the other, just an update on the chat team, the MRT teams, and possible expansion of it to four teams, and maybe going out to, they're talking about the West Side, North Temple area, relocating those. Can you give us a update?
Update on where we're at right now?
And the thoughts behind, and the cost, if you have some ideas.
Absolutely, councilmember. So right now, we have two chat teams in service. We have six social workers plus one supervisor. Two chat teams in operations in the field. They're located on the west side at Station 6. That's on Indiana Avenue about 9th West. And on the east side at Station 5, by the whale. The plan right now is to stay with our current complement of social workers. We have no immediate plans to expand, however, we're gonna leave that opportunity open as we collect data. And we've been in service now with chat. We're just coming up on three years. So we're collecting some really valuable data over the last two complete years, '24 and '23. And that's listed in your, in your packet here. So they continue to get more calls. We are modifying their response districts. So we're expanding them here and there, depending on their current volume. Right now, the teams are receiving maybe six to seven calls average a day. And they're on duty for approximately 13 hours and 20 minutes, Monday through Saturday. So that's pretty good, but I, I would like to see them, I'd like to see that average response number increase to about 10, nine or 10. I think that optimally, we can get the most out of the teams at that number. So we're moving in the right direction. We're gonna continue to tweak things and get them out dispatched and address some of the, some of the routine and not-so-routine response demands that we see out there.
Is there the demand or the need for 10 responses, that we just don't have the, the ability to do those responded? Or like, there's requests for 10, but we're only can get to eight because they're just on the wrong side of town when they're handling the one before.
There are times when the chat is not available, when they're already on a call, or the MRT has taken them on a different call, and they're on a medical call.
Yeah.
And the, the social worker component is attached to them, so they're unable to respond. But I would say, for the most part, our numbers indicate that right now, the, the volume isn't there to support an additional team right now. If it, if it becomes clear that the city would benefit and we'd get a reasonable return on the investment, councilmember, we would be, we would be quick to come to you and say, okay, I think it's time. I think we could use another chat team here or there. But what I'd like to do is continue to, continue with the current model. I'd like to hire two additional medical response paramedics, which we have vacancies for right now, but we have good applicants. I think we're gonna hire that like in the next month.
Yeah, yeah, I saw that.
And then I'd like to get that whole model out there, you know, the civilian paramedics matched up with the firefighter EMT, matched up with a social worker, and just see where that goes. You know, I don't want to make any knee-jerk reactions or react to just a, an initial trend to what we're seeing, and then bring, bring back that data to you and say, this is what we're seeing with these teams. They, they certainly work. We really like what they're doing.
Okay.
And they're becoming more busy, and the return is significant, you know. Fiscally, it's really a good return on investment.
And, and the dispatchers are also getting more, more experience on when they need to dispatch them, how they need to.
They are, with the new dispatch software now called AppCole, the dispatchers have more ability to get involved in what they see as an obvious need for, for a resource at this location, maybe not in this location, and they can make those adjustments on the fly. Whereas previously, with the software they're using, they're unable to do that.
And if you were, if you, when you do see that need to go up a team, does that, that would include another vehicle or two also to include that, so there'd be?
It would. It would be vehicle, radios, computers, all those things.
Everything else. It's not like we have, this, we don't have that in spares at this point.
Right. And it really do add another chat team you're taught, we're talking about, another six individuals, you know, three that work Monday through Wednesday, and then three more that work Thursday through Saturday. And that would be two social workers, two medical response paramedics, and two more firefighters.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that. You've, you've kind of, you're weighing the numbers now, and there's not a need right now. And so we don't want to ask for something that we don't really need to have a need, so we want to make sure that we're fully.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I appreciate, I appreciate the interest and the opportunity to always come back to the council and say, I think we're there. But I hate to go, we don't need to go too fast forward. Let's see what we have, and I like to analyze it and poke some holes in it.
Okay.
And make sure it's gonna be what we need.
Right. I appreciate it, because I think it's, it's a wonderful team and it's wonderful program, so you got my support there, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, councilmember.
So Chief, I had some questions about, you know, we saw the, the fires that happened earlier this year in Alta Dina and around LA. And so I had some residents reach out and say that they were surprised that, in light of that, that there isn't more, there isn't anything new in the budget this year regarding wildfires. And does that, you know, I know that we sent some firefighters from Salt Lake City to fight those fires as well, to assist. Does it make sense that, that we would not have any recommended changes for our budget or our department this year? Lessons learned or anything like that?
Absolutely, councilmember. Well, there's, there's lots of lessons learned from the LA fires, and we spent a good portion of our first five months of the year talking, not only amongst the city leaders, you know, and yourselves, as well the councilmembers, but with our public, our community councils, a lot of questions about risk and what's happening, and could it happen here? So we've been doing a lot of educating out in the communities. It's true that we don't have any specific wildfire components fiscally in this budget this year, but that's not indicative of the kind of emphasis we're putting on wildfire within the department. For instance, CWPP, the Consolidated Wildfire Protection Plan, that's due for revision right now. We've been successful in obtaining a grant to hire a professional to help us with the latest update. That's been in place since 2017. And essentially, it's, it's a plan that consolidates, or it gets all the players together as far as the community, municipal services, state resources, gets them together to focus on preparedness for any one city or community, to become more resilient to wildfire. That's what the CWPP is. It also alleviates the potential for the city to be responsible for enormous fire suppression bills regarding aircraft drops, helicopters, state fire crews, as long as we implement the policy and we do what's, what's listed within it in preparation. So we have that coming. That, that grant allows us to put out an RFP for a professional to help us with the most recent update. That's a really important component, the CWPP. We've also now created a wildland coordinator within the department. That's a firefighter dedicated solely to the development and assessments of the department's readiness for wildfire. So that person's involved in the training, the certifications, mutual aid, any, any collaboration we do with deployments, EMAC requests, you know, send our firefighters out. We've never had that firefighter position before, just dedicated to that. So that is 40 hours a week, just looking at what we need to do right now for the next wildfire. So that in addition to, to ongoing training. We've got crews now are going out pre-planning in areas, additional areas, and they've routinely done throughout the city. High-risk areas like City Creek, behind the Capitol, North Avenue, Carrigan Canyon, for instance. Just last weekend, we were out putting out flyers in the Carrigan Canyon community, talking to the neighbors, discussing how they can harden their, their residence and their homes, and letting them know that they can contact us, slcfire.gov, and we can go out there. The crews will physically go out there, talk to the neighbors, look at their homes, look at their yard, and say, we recommend, you know, that maybe this brush doesn't touch your eaves. So we're actively, actively trying to prepare our communities for the potential of a wildfire incident.
And so for, let's say, residents that, that live in those areas. Well, okay, so in my time on the council, there's been a wildfire in my district almost every year. And, you know, to the credit of our firefighters, we haven't lost any lives to those wildfires. We haven't lost any homes. There's been some damage, but we haven't had any total losses, you know, knock on wood. But I think those neighbors are feeling, you know, nervous around this time of year. And so I guess if you could speak more to, you know, kind of what efforts. There's nothing new in this budget that, this year, that would address this particular issue, but that, that doesn't mean that there aren't ongoing funds that continue to address wildlife urban interface or this area of the district. Can you speak to those in any more detail, other than what you've already given?
There's always opportunities with grants, additional funds and monies for additional wildland equipment, additional, say, apparatus like brush trucks, you know, the smaller SUVs that have the water tank behind them. There's gonna be opportunities always to hire additional firefighters so that they can respond quickly and in numbers to various parts of the city. I can, I can almost guarantee next year, for instance, we'll be coming back. The fire department will be asking for firefighters. They'd like to put a new apparatus in the Sugar House area, a large apparatus. So we'd like to staff that. We've been working towards that for several years now. That would allow, as soon as we increase the number of firefighters, councilmember, that means I have four additional firefighters, or six additional firefighters to send to any given wildfire throughout Salt Lake City. And right now, we can put firefighters in pretty much any area of the city pretty quickly, definitely within NFPA standards. And we feel really good about that. But the key part is getting to those scenes as quickly as possible with as many resources and as much water as possible. So ultimately, it's about the resources.
Can you tell me a little bit more about that metric that you just mentioned, like getting, you can get firefighters to anywhere in the city? What metric was that that you said?
The National Fire Protection Agency lays out the industry standard for how fast a firefighter complement multiple engines have to arrive at any given fire incident, depending on the day, at the night, and we meet those standards.
And that, that accounts for the increased risk and, and I guess increased difficulty of trying to get to, you know, some of these areas that are through the not grid portions of the city.
It does. It does. And they're constantly evaluating the need and what that standard should be and they're updating it as well.
Okay. Um, and then if, um, if residents, um, want to have firefighters come out and look at their property, can you tell me some of the things that they look for? Um, I, I'm asking this for the benefit of the public. Um, I've heard this presentation before, but if you could just give a reminder of what are some of the things that people, um, can call the fire department to come do and what are things that fire depart, firefighters look for when they come to these types of properties?
They can contact us, council member, and what they will do is they will come out and they will make recommendations to the homeowner about what they can do to their property to make it more resilient for wildfire. They're going to be looking at things at the fuels that are already onsite, you know, up against their home. They would like to see defensible space, at least 30 feet between the home and dense brush, you know, trees, things like that. They would like trees cut away from the eaves or the roof lines of the homes because it's such a large surface area. That's the first thing usually that superheats in a house in a wildfire and starts, it's the roof. It's the roof for the eaves. And of course fencing across the property, often that is just surrounded by brush or trees or shrubs. Um, so basically the firefighters will go out and they're, they're going to give, uh, counsel to the residents and say, these are the kind of things you probably should address. You should also have a plan to leave your home if necessary. Um, it's important for us to kind of, um, educate our community and our, our neighbors that in some instances, in some conditions, there has to be a point where they have to be willing to leave their homes. That's just the reality of it. Look, I mean, anyone who watched what happened in Los Angeles, you cannot stay to the last minute where it takes multiple first responders to try and get you out of your home and save your life. That's first responders that aren't, aren't suppressing the fire. They're not trying, they're not available anymore. So, um, the reality is we have, we can, we can improve and we can harden our neighborhood as much as possible. Ultimately, it's going to be the responsibility of the homeowner to determine, okay, I think I've done everything that I can do and it's clear that, that the city is doing everything they can do, we're going to have to leave. And I hope it never comes to that, council member.
Yep. Um, so Rocky Mountain Power's been putting, doing replacements, um, up in the foothills and, um, replacing some old lines and, um, and, and then not replacing other lines. Um, do you know what sort of, um, role the city has in ensuring that, um, we can respond to any fires that might be caused by those? Um, is that information that Rocky Mountain Power has to come up with or is that information that, that we sign off on?
Um, we're, we're going to, we're going to respond to any ignition source at all, council member, whether it's the power lines or, you know, human cause. I don't know that we, I don't know what the obligation the city has with Rocky.
Sorry, maybe, um, a better way of asking it would be like, is there, um, any like increased risk, um, of having these replaced lines that people should be aware of or that the city needs to be, um, increasing resources to meet that? If they're running more power through the area, does that mean we need commensurate increase in resources to address potential fires?
I am not familiar with any algorithm that would determine, um, what the X amount of resources, if any, would be necessary because of, um, additional power lines.
Okay.
Or land or underground.
Okay. I'm sorry, I have one more question. I always get this question too from residents that, um, ask why this, you know, as, as you're up in City Creek Canyon, um, recreating or, you know, on any of our trails, we have more users up on the trails, um, as the city continues to grow. Um, does it make sense to put more effort towards, you know, clearing out that brush and informa, and, and, um, fuel for a fire? Or is that the best way to use resources or is there a better way to, to use resources as there continues to be more people in the foothills?
I, I think it always makes sense to clear out the brush that is reasonably, reasonably removed from that area. Um, the issue is, you know, if, if we dedicate the fire crews to doing the clearing, they won't be available to respond to the medical call, you know, that's right down the street because they may be up City Creek. Uh, I do not see them as that, that as their primary duties, council member, although we have in the past always participated in those kind of events and all those kind of efforts. I hesitate to put that on public utilities or public services. It's a collaborative effort involving also the state resources as well, the Forest Service is there. But yeah, the answer, the, the, the short answer is yes, we should clear out as much brush as we can, especially the dead, the dead vegetation, which turns into easy fuel for wildfires.
Right. When I talked to you about this before, you said that you, you would put, that it's almost, um, more economical or like more, we get more by educating that for things like that. Um, can you?
Yeah, I think, I think we do. I remember talking to you about this. So the more that we can, we can make contact with our residents and our communities and, and let them know that they additionally have some responsibility to help with the clearing of brush, the clearing of fuel just on their own property, um, creating defensible space, you know, having a plan. I think that is, the returns on that kind of education outweighs anything that one single the city department or a combination of two or three city departments can accomplish. Um, there's so much that can be done by the individual property owner. And, and I think we have a lot more public education that still can be accomplished, um, more than, than we're capable of doing with the personnel we have right now. But yeah, I do think that's really valuable.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
That's what we're doing.
Mr. Chair, thank you. And this kind of tags into that same line right there about what the residents can do. The residents who are along the, uh, wildlife urban interface there, they're, they can get permits to clear out the brush on, on the, uh, on the other side of their fence line, a number of feet. Is that, is that true or is that accurate?
Awesome. Well, no, they should contact the Fire Prevention Bureau and find out if their specific property is allowed under that, under that.
Okay. So it's specific homes, specific areas and, and a specific distance from their.
Yeah, that applies state property.
So, and who is that again they're talking to?
Fire Prevention Bureau can help them with that.
Fire Prevention Bureau?
Yeah.
Okay. I appreciate that because I think there's probably a number of residents who would, uh, probably do that work if.
Yes. slcfire.gov will get them right onto the right page for that.
Okay. So our, our fire page will get them there?
Yes.
Okay. And they can go to the mobile app to do that too.
Mm-hmm.
Gotcha. All right. Thank you.
Yep. Council, uh, Member Pui.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, uh, my question relates back to some of the initial conversations related to the, the chat team and the work that, uh, the fire, uh, department is doing to help us address some of the issues we, uh, see in our streets and, and, and beyond that, you know, in our neighborhoods. But I, I'm, uh, just because of, of, uh, the issues that we experience in our capital city go beyond, um, go beyond, uh, they, they go into the, the political conversation realm and, and at a state level, uh, and they become very politicized, uh, conversations when we're talking about mental health, when we're talking about people that are experiencing homelessness and substance abuse and, and, uh, overdoses in our streets and all of these, uh, all of these, uh, things that are happening, uh, and how your fire, uh, department, how your department responds to those, uh, challenges. Um, I am curious to, uh, get to the bottom of, uh, how much of the resources of the department go into addressing some of these, uh, these issues we experience in our capital city. Um, uh, and this is important to me and I believe for us and together as a city, when we're talking to legislators, um, to highlight the work that we do and how much the, the taxpayers of Salt Lake City are subsidizing an issue that is beyond, uh, Salt Lake City, um, an issue that we see in our streets, uh, but is a state issue. Uh, and to make the case that, uh, we are working very hard and the neighbors in Salt Lake City, well, paying our taxes, uh, we are paying a chunk of that to address this issue. Um, and it, sometimes it feels like it's not enough. Um, so I, I would love to, to try to get your department to give us some sort of data, uh, back. Um, I know that this might be a little hard, I don't know, um, to, to know how many of those issues relate to the issues that many of our legislators, uh, talk often, um, about what Salt Lake City is doing or not. Um, so we can highlight the work that you do. Um, I, I think that is important to me to, uh, to have those numbers. So, uh, I wonder if that's, uh, possible to work on.
Sure. We could, we could calculate that and put a number, uh, to that. And, and I, I think specifically what you're talking about, uh, Councilmember Pui is alternate response models, for instance, what's the total? Those are almost solely created, well, that's not true, not solely, but a large portion of their service goes to the, the community and the, and the city challenges that we see on a routine basis. Substance abuse, mental illness, unsheltered.
Yeah. And not only those that we created with the alternative response, uh, model, but many of, of the, uh, your, your, your firefighters, uh, are, um, called to, uh, medical emergencies, uh, in our streets.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, how do we segregate what is, uh, how is, uh, you know, a case of, of, uh, a situation of someone unsheltered and how not? Uh, it's an interesting question that I wonder if there is a clear solution. Uh, but I, I, I want to start digging into that data. Not me, you know, I don't want to feel like, I don't want you to feel like I'm digging into your data, but, but I, but I, this is, this is important to me. Uh, I see your officers, uh, unfortunately and unfortunately, uh, at the same time, addressing some of those concerns in, in, in my part of town, uh, keeping, uh, keeping them alive, uh, with Narcan and all the tools that you guys partner with, uh, Utenolaxon and, and all of those. But I, uh, I, I really want to get to the bottom of, to say, this is how many hours? So this is how much of the, the, your budget? I don't know what tool to use it to measure, uh, but it's important to me to get that information to be able to express how much of our, uh, efforts go into trying to address an issue that is beyond Salt Lake. Uh, I hope that that gives you a little more clarity. I, again, it's not an easy, I'm sure that you're not, you're not going to just push a couple buttons and spew a document, but I, I will welcome some direction on this.
Okay. Will do. We'll provide that.
Oh, Councilmember Petro.
Sorry to be late, but I did prepare. Um, as I was talking to my neighbors about this, under the division budgets, there's community risk reduction. Can you just qualify what that is? My neighbors and I were having difficulty labeling what services would fall under community risk reduction.
Well, there's a lot of components involved in community risk reduction. It's relatively new, uh, division for the fire department. Now I have an assistant chief just over community risk reduction. So that encompasses everything in emergency management, council member. So everything we're doing with public education, with handling, handling the large incidents that occur in the city, we're doing a lot of outreach through emergency management. Uh, CRR also falls under the Fire Prevention Bureau. So they're working with the codes and code enforcement and just talking with developers and things like that about how to build safe buildings and safe properties. Um, it also encompasses technology. Obviously, technology touches everything in the fire department. So, um, CRR, we see that as kind of a, um, conglomeration of just so many things where we interact with the community. Community Relations Division falls under community relation, CRR, community risk reduction. So we do all kinds of fire, um, education and property resilience that we've been talking about here. That all falls under community risk reduction.
Thank you. That helps me answer their questions. My only concern with this budget is, um, it's exceedingly flat for a core city service. So I'm, I'm thankful that you helped us with a hard budget year. Um, I am concerned about our ability to keep pace with the demand of your services as population and business grows. I know out in the port area, we're starting to have conversations about the need for a police precinct and also for increased fire service. Um, of course, that's going to require the state to give us some of the tax that they took from us back to pay for those services and the capital expense, which I'm happy to get in the crosshairs for. But just as we move forward, um, I'd love a conversation that kind of centers around, what does it look like for healthy growth for this department in direct response to the, to the growth that we're seeing? To make sure that while I'm thankful that you're doing what you're doing this year and, and this is necessary, that we don't fall behind, whether it's in paying our firefighters, making sure you have access to the technology and the materials you need, or growing appropriately and not overwhelming what we have.
Understood. Thank you.
All right. I don't think we have any other questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Council Chair. Council?
All right. Moving on to agenda item number six. Um, this is responses. What? Oh, sorry. Whoops, we have a break. Let's take that break. Um, break, yes. Um, we'll be back at 2:20. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, everybody. Our responses to open legislative intents from previous years. Woo!
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Assuming that was a heartfelt. It sounded like it.
It was, I am pumped. Feel the energy. So yeah, we have Allison Rowland, Council Policy Analyst, and then we also have Mary Beth available and various department folks if we need them. Okay, so go ahead and.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the purpose of this update is for the council to consider closing any existing or previous legislative intents. And on Thursday, you'll have the opportunity to raise any new legislative intents. And of course, you can email me or send them to, to anyone really on staff before then, if you'd like. The potential policy, excuse me, the potential council policy questions are noted in the context of each of the items in the staff report. And there are also council staff recommendations on whether to leave each intent open or to close it. The closing of legislative intent gives you the option to either close and complete or close and continue indefinitely as a policy change. The council can consider closing any legislative intent during this briefing. And for your convenience, I believe Scott will put up a, basically the contents of attachment C two, which is the original language of each of the intents. So, Mr. Chair, it's up to you how you'd like to go through this, if, if people want to focus on a particular policy question or on the legislative intents that staff thinks might be ripe for closing or considering closing.
And several of the legislative intents relate to the Attorney's Office, and the city attorney had to step out for just a minute. I didn't know if we wanted to start with some of the other departments for him to have a chance to get back.
Yeah, he also said to go forward if he, if we didn't think that we had a lot of questions, and we also have Cindy Lou here. But yeah, maybe we'll put those towards the end. And other than that, help me, how do we, how should we go through this thing?
Allison, do you want to maybe just go to the next department and then maybe?
Okay.
Maybe would it help if she read kind of the titles? And then if, if that jogs any questions, you guys can jump in? Would that work?
Sure.
Great, and hopefully Scott can follow along as well, so you can get the refresher. Or of course, you can look on your own screens if you have it pulled up. So after the Attorney's Office, we have Community and Neighborhood, Neighborhoods Department. The first one is FY25 Neighborhood District Signs. This, the status assessment that, that staff, wow, that's a lot of S's. The status is, the staff status assessment is that it remain open because the administration noted that the response is forthcoming. The next would be Youth and Family Program Streamlining, which we also recommend stay open. And then the third in can would be the Trips to Transit Expansion Evaluation. And I want to note that we did receive that, those attachments from the administration this afternoon, so I forwarded them to all of you on trips to transit. And we also recommend for that to be left open. Next would be the Department of Economic Development.
Do you want to, do you want to pause here and look at those three at this time?
Sorry?
I'm, I'm, I'm just going to make the suggestion of saying that I think we should keep these three open. I'm not looking to close them, and I think we need to do that, just.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I agree. Okay?
Okay. Economic Development is the old FY15 Maintenance of Business districts, which there is further description of under the Public Services Department. To Finance Department, the first would be Policy Goals for Zero-Based Budgeting Exercise. There are three subcategories underneath this intent. One is Balancing Resources in the Public Lands Department, which we believe should be left open. Evaluating Alternative Response Programs, which we also believe should be open. And then the Staff Vacancy Analysis, which there was one included in the May's Recommended Budget this year, and so we think you could consider closing and continuing that one.
Okay.
I'm agreeing with closing and continuing that one. I'd like to keep that, you know, on the radar as far as, hey, when we get to a certain level, hey, how many vacancies we do have that we need to address those vacancies. But if it's going down and we're seeing a better usage of our funds and our hiring, then I don't think we need to have that continued open.
Okay. Can I ask, I don't know if this is the appropriate place to ask, so tell me to pause if I need to. But in addition to Public Lands, I'd like, I've sort of started talking about this to Mary Beth and Ben as a way for me to get access to data for decision-making. I'd like a comparison of possibly like the last five years of what we've invested in some strategic places, both raw numbers and percentages. So not just the balancing resources in Public Lands, but understanding how it compares to what we've done in like Public Services and Roads, and how it compares to what we've done in Economic Development. To also get a higher, like a 30,000 level view of not just how we're distributing within this department, but how the investment in this department is aligning with other core city functions and needs. I don't know if that goes with this intent or is too much of a departure, and maybe that's a separate task that we undertake at a later time, but I thought it would be good to raise it here since it's been something I'm mulling over.
I think we could absolutely, staff could absolutely look at that. I think we're, we'll probably need some help, maybe with finance and the administration and even with you guys, is that there have been quite a few shifts among departments. And then there have been sort of operational investments that have changed over the years based on significant one-time kind of capital investments. And so just teasing out what, what is really happening to the core budget versus what is kind of happening in the periphery. So I don't think that that's an insurmountable task, though, and, and it would be interesting to kind of, to have the more comparative metrics of.
Yeah, and that's, and that's exactly the heart of what I want. I don't, I don't want to create unfair comparisons or distortions, but just, yes, thank you.
And would that be considered a new legislative intent? Or I don't, I'm not sure how to handle that.
Maybe let's, because I think, I mean, I think that a certain amount of it we could probably handle internally, just in our staff, and maybe that's more of just an evolving analysis that our staff could do, rather than putting it on a legislative intent. So if you're okay with that, and then we can kind of keep it on our radar.
So there was the question of whether to. So there was the question of whether to close and continue the staff vacancy analysis. Does anyone object to that? I'm not calling for a vote here, just asking.
If you, if anyone wants to make straw polls about to, on any of these, to either accept staff's recommendations or not, we can, that would help too.
I would just take the straw poll that we take the staff's recommendations on the Finance Department's assessment of these three items.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, that's a thumbs up with Councilmember Young absent. Councilmember Mono. Oh. Okay, then next.
Okay, next under Finance would be the Consolidated Fee Schedule. And there are, I believe, three parts to this. Sidewalk closures, lane closures, and sidewalk fees, including potential fines for blocking sidewalks, and that's open, or our recommendation is open. Reducing business license fees for push carts and other mobile vendors, also a recommendation to leave it open. Providing 100% forgiveness of city playing field fees for youth development teams, not competitive teams, in return for sweat equity at these locations. That would also recommend, is recommended to be open. And then, yes, there is a fourth one, that an annual report be provided with the Mayor's Recommended Budget to show the percentage of fully loaded potential fees that is proposed. Wow, I don't know if that's [inaudible] people. I hope it is. So that the council can consider adjusting on that basis.
So I would say we do want the explicitly request this research on the number C, to provide the 100% forgiveness to city playing fields for use.
I'm sorry, so.
Do you have the council question here? Would the council like to explicitly request this research? And I would say yes.
Okay.
I agree. I think there is probably more than enough there to support that.
That's number C. Where is it?
Yes.
I'm looking at a different page, sorry.
Do you want to propose a straw poll?
Yes, I propose a straw poll that we agree with the staff recommendation and explicitly request research for, to item number C on the Consolidated Fee Schedule.
Okay, that's a thumbs up for me as well. So that's unanimous with Councilmember Young absent.
Okay, any others under that Finance item of Consolidated Fee Schedule? If not, I'll move on to Legal Defenders Association, which staff thought you could consider closing. There's also a policy question there that, given the recommendation of the administration against making this shift, would the council like to reconsider whether to pursue this intent? And the intent is whether the, whether funding our future funds should be used to help fund the Legal Defenders Association budget each year. I believe this was proposed by a previous council member.
This basically just increases the flexibility of funds, or increases the kinds of funds that could be used for the LDA budget, which may result in more options in future budget years. Really, the council doesn't need a legislative intent to do this. You could just decide to allocate funding our future dollars towards this budget. So sometimes because that sales tax has been growing at a higher rate because we could keep 100% of it, there are more funding our future dollars available, although the growing number of uses for those dollars is complicating the availability of funds.
Yeah, the truth is that, Mr. Chair, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember.
The truth is that there are very few pots of money that are very clear. This is one of those unfunded mandates that the state is giving us, the legal defender side of things. And it's, we don't have a really clear path to catch up with the demand that the Legal Defender Association and the criminal justice system is requiring from our city. I will keep, I will prefer that we keep this option there so to remind us that there is an opportunity there to allow another use for another pot of money that we could potentially draw, especially when we just, many of us had small group meetings about the need of the Legal Defender Association. I think this is one of those places that we should definitely consider. So by keeping it open, maybe it reminds us that we do have an opportunity to spread the peanut butter a little thinner from the, from that, from that pot of money.
Mr. Chair.
Maybe I'm not understanding. I think since we don't have to officially allow or move, authorize funding our future dollars to go to the Legal Defense LDA group, we can do that as a case basis and a year levy fund.
Right, the council would have to, I mean, you do have to officially decide.
Right.
Because we have to track it separately.
Right.
But you could decide to handle it differently each year.
Yeah, we could decide, yeah. And I'm not opposed to that. I just am, this is a set of funding that we're expanding the, what we can fund out of it. So it's almost growing to the size of a general fund. So it's like, so why do we have this fund if it's going to be so expansive that everything's included underneath it, then it should just be back to where it is in the general fund side of the house. So I think maybe on an annual basis, we could look at it. But I wouldn't want it to say add it carte blanche to the funding our future pot. Because we're, it's growing right now. It's going to become really obsolete because it's just going to be another general fund.
But the funding our future dollars is a bond. And for us to be able to draw money out of that for a function that we haven't identified, we have to make it very clear.
It's not a bond.
It's the point five for the jail.
Oh, it's from the jail fund?
Yeah.
It's an ongoing sales tax. There was a bond packaged with it when you implemented funding our future.
So what you're saying, then if it's not, what you say, so I'm confused because I was caught up on the bond situation. So I was like, if we are, if it is a bond, then we needed to really make it very clear. So if it is not.
So right now, it's, it has specific guardrails on using that fund. If we continue to expand that, the guardrails to use that fund, then it becomes kind of basically a general fund because it's got no, it really doesn't have any guardrails. And it's just funding for everything else. So keep the guardrails tight as we have it now, because we have even expanded it over the last five years. But if we, if we need to, or we think it's valuable at one time, we do it on a one-year basis.
I mean, I think that ultimately this thing here open doesn't hurt us.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think it highlights the need. What I will argue, on the other hand, is that we seem to always forget about the Legal Defender Association in some shape, level of form. And I really want us to maybe lock in some clear funding source for it that make, make our decisions in the future easier. So maybe a technicality as far as like we can decide to do it. And this is maybe a reminder, but I prefer to keep it open, but ultimately, it doesn't really matter.
And straw poll, anyone?
Straw poll to keep it open.
All right, that's also unanimous with Councilmember Young absent.
The next item under the Finance Department is the Consolidated Fee Schedule Holistic Review. This is another that staff thought you could consider closing. And there's a policy question for you, which is, given this information from the administration, would the council like to reconsider whether to pursue this intent? This is related to the fact that each of the fees on the CFS requires a cost justification study. So, so it's not, how can I put this? So it's not just sort of, the amounts aren't taken from thin air. They're based on a cost justification study.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
This is something I've been interested in for a while, and I don't know that we've ever really had a chance to dig into it. I'm not sure what would change in the next few months that would allow us the time to dig into that because it's a big document. But I do, my understanding that we have to cost justify every fee, I do think that there are certain things, just like with the baseball, the youth development league use of city baseball fields. There are certain things that we want to encourage or at least facilitate, and other things that we maybe want to discourage happening. And I think this is one of the tools that we have to do that, as long as we're within state statute. So I think it's still worth either keeping on there, just at least understanding when those things are sort of maybe not right-sized for the kind of activities or things that we want to see in the city. So I think there's a lot of valuable work that could be done there. I'm not necessarily, I just know it's been something we've talked about for a long time and hasn't happened. And I, again, I don't know if it will rise to the level where we have the time to do that, but it really could be impactful.
Councilmember Dugan.
My only question is, it seems like the system right now and our policy already does that review as we look at, through the different requirements and the cost justification. And because of, the whole baseball thing didn't happen because we had this intent. It happened because we made it happen. And so I'm not sure if we actually need an intent to do what the policy and what our process already tells us that we must do as far as justify the cost, justify the fee schedule, and justify any changes. So intent doesn't really.
Well, the, what I'm talking about is policy considerations. So the baseball discussion had nothing to do with the cost justification. That was a policy consideration that council members made of, we want to encourage these youth development leagues and allow them to use the fields without having to pay, especially if they can, that's totally a policy consideration. And that would not have happened if not for a specific interest.
Yeah.
You know, something, we had some feedback from, from those leagues, and there are some council members that are very interested in that. That would not have happened. I assume that there are at least 10 other things in our consolidated fee schedule where we could make really good policy decisions like we did with the baseball fee item, but we just would never think of doing that. So I'm not necessarily going to fight to keep it open because I realize how much work that would be to go through and to cost, to your point, Allison, to cost justify every fee in there. Though I don't think we would have to cost justify fees that we're reducing, because we already know that the fee that we're currently charging is cost justified. So if there are certain things where we're like, this doesn't make sense for us to, to charge. I see Mary Beth coming up, so I'm saying something ridiculous, I think, but.
So every fee in the general fund has been cost justified. Some of them a long time ago, some of them current to date. What I would say, let me give business licensing, for example, the regular business license fee has increased based on a CPI index. That CPI index may not be sufficient for the costs for that regulatory flat business license, right? We may charge $100, but the cost may be $150. If you said, we want to give all vending carts, we want to, we don't want to charge them that regulatory cost of $100 anymore, even though it's 150 for the costs of service, that's your decision. But every fee inside the CFS at some point in time has been cost justified.
Yeah. So I think if there were fees similar to baseball where we actually think we don't want to charge this fee because we want this activity to happen more in our city, we could reduce that without having to go through a process. Again, I'm not saying this rises to like the top level of what I think we should be spending our time doing. But I, if it's my choice, I would leave it on there, just because I think there's a lot of good work that could be done in that case. And there's probably other fees where we're like, look, we, we want to charge the maximum number that we can. For instance, the boarded building fee. We wanted to put that up because we do not want to allow boarded buildings to sit there. So there's activities we want to encourage in our city, and there's activities that we want to discourage in our city. But the fee has the uniform effect of making those things less likely to happen. So I think we can encourage more of the things we want and discourage more things we don't want by making those, the things that we don't want, making those fees all the way up to the top, and then reducing all the other ones proportionally to still make our budget. But again, I would like to keep it on there just because I think that it's a good thing that we need to do at some point.
What if we narrow it down a little bit? Because I feel like the.
It's so big.
Holistic, I mean, what if we divided by department or even division or, you know, and then we can, what are the top, you know, department that we want to look into and start working on that? It seems like it may be an easier task, and it could spark some like coordination between us off.
And I should, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just going to jump in and say, I think based on several of the conversations that I've had with council members since the original intent was adopted, I think Public Lands is where most of those fees that maybe aren't, you know, you know, it's not like we're making a ton of money for the city off of park pavilion rental, but that's a really important city function for certain families. And maybe Public Lands is the right place to start looking at those fees.
Will you be open to?
So narrow it.
For this year, narrowing it to Public Lands, and we'll have a new director in there. And I think it's a good opportunity to review it.
I like that, making it a bite-sized chunk rather than, let's look at the whole CFS, which we'd never have the time to do. Okay, so then I would propose a straw poll that we keep this legislative intent open, but narrow it to looking at the consolidated fee schedule in the upcoming fiscal year, specific to the Department of Public Lands.
Could I just add one more bit of information? Mary Beth had actually sent some information, I believe it was in response to questions I had on this legislative intent, that tells you which of the items in the CFS are not charging the full 100% of possible fees. Now, that's not exactly the same question that you're referring to, of course, but, but that may have some hints as well.
That's great.
I think adding that list to the review for us to, if there is already, the administration has identified already fees that are not cut up to the full cost, I feel like those ones should come very quickly to, for discussion. And then Public Lands, if you're okay to focus on those two things.
Well, I guess the way I see it is if we start with Public Lands, we look at the list and we say, these are the things that we would like to reduce the fee ideally so that families that can't afford to rent a park pavilion can do so more easily. And these are things where we actually would like to increase the fee because we don't want, I don't know, whatever, this thing.
Dumping tires.
Yeah, dumping tires in our, along the Jordan River. We want to, I don't know if there's a fee for that, but we want to increase that as much as possible. And so then, then the administration and staff could go back and say, okay, well, the ones that you want to increase, you can't, or you can. And then we'll know, just like we did with the boarded building fee.
The other thing I'd like to look at in conjunction with this, I know historically we've tried to keep everything in small claims court. I don't know that every fee justifies that guiding principle anymore, especially with the amount of revenue that flows around certain industries. Like, I'm thinking particularly when we get to the boarded building fee, even with them compounding, it's just not the deterrent that we want it to be. And we're watching our firefighters in the line of harm because of it, you know? So as we go through this, I would like to look at that, right? Like, not only where can we reduce it to make it more approachable to the community, more of an amenity to the community, but also are we needlessly limiting ourselves with that small claims court concept in all places? Like, people who dump tires, I'm not really worried about your economic solvency, no matter how recently you immigrated here. I think that is a disrespect to our shared space, and you should be penalized heavily for it. So as we look through it, not only where can we invite the community in, but like, where, is it really worth it for us to keep below these thresholds in all cases as we're looking at the things that are particularly egregious?
Yeah. And your point, I think it's, it expands it again. And so I, you know.
Of course it does.
And then like, you know, so I'm worried that we will not.
It feels like this question comes up organically as we look at it, so.
I agree.
But all of these things that we're discussing will be, I think, manageable to discuss by focusing on department. That's a really, I think it's a really brilliant idea that I hadn't thought of. So thank you. And I, so, is, that's my straw poll, Mr. Chair.
And what is it?
That we keep this legislative intent open, but narrow it to, for this upcoming fiscal year, the Department of Public Lands.
Councilmember, oh, okay. All right. Well, that's it. Okay, so that's five in favor with two councilmembers absent.
Great. Moving on, another four finance, Grants and Ongoing Programs. The question is, well, the policy question is whether the council wants to engage with the Finance Department for a detailed discussion of the potential of the new Workday system to evaluate potential policy guidance related to grant funding. So this is a new opportunity that has come out with the adoption of Workday.
I still like this.
You want to keep it?
Keep it open.
Yes, and yeah, the staff recommendation is to keep it open. I forgot to say that, but yes.
You need to propose this straw poll?
I propose a straw poll that we keep this one open.
Okay.
Number, grants and ongoing programs.
Okay, that's unanimous with two councilmembers absent.
Moving on to human resources, the compensation plan. This is the single intent there and the staff recommendation is to close and complete it because the department has incorporated its recommendations for changes and edits into the FY26 Annual Compensation Plan for Non-Represented Employees. So essentially, they've done what the council asked them to.
Oh, nice. Love that.
My straw poll is that we close and complete.
In favor? All right, that is five with two councilmembers absent.
Thank you. Sorry for the editorial comment, it just slipped out. Mayor's Office Legislative Intent. The first is about noise enforcement, vehicular and non-vehicular. The administration plans to send transmittals on this issue soon, so we have recommended you leave that open. The next would be evaluating efficiencies across diversified response teams. And the administration says that it has included a midterm action in the public safety plan to improve efficiency and effectiveness of its diversified response teams. So we were thinking this should be left open, but that the council might, may want to consider scheduling a briefing with the administration to talk about this.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, councilmember?
I would love it if we could schedule that briefing this calendar year. I think it's time for us to do that. We've, we started these almost five years ago, oh, no, five years ago, we started all, a lot of these diversified response teams. And it's, I think it's really time for us to consider that. And I think there are efficiencies and changes that we can make that will provide better service to our community or save money or both. So I'd like for, I'd like for us to keep this open and also prioritize scheduling the briefing on that.
I 1,000% second that.
I was just going to do a straw poll on all three of the mayors and say, agree with what Terrence said.
This was the noise.
Yeah, and noise also, but the straw poll to take the staff recommendations on all three of these underneath the mayors, along with councilmember Mono's recommendations or requests to have it done by the calendar year.
Okay. All right, that is six in favor with two, or one councilmember absent.
And just as a note, there are actually only two items under the mayor's office. The apprenticeship program incentives was accidentally included, so I'm assuming that's, you don't need a new straw poll for that.
No.
But I'm not an attorney, so you might not want to trust me on that. Police Department, there are several under here, I believe. Actually, it's one, the police department role, and there are several subpoints on this one, all of which staff recommends remain open. One is on the social workers, the second is on the Internal Affairs Unit, and the third is on the Police Community Response Teams. So the department did provide updated information, but I'm not sure it responds to the, to the intent that the council originally had then. So one possibility is for the council to schedule another briefing and this one with the administration and the department to discuss these issues in more depth.
Mr. Chair, I will think this briefing along with the one we just talked about, diversified response teams are, could be co-located, briefed together. And so they're redundant in that case, but, and to leave these one, two, three, open while we have that conversation as soon as we can, as we just talked about with councilmember Mono. So my straw polls, take the recommendations of the staff on the police department's intents and include that briefing with the briefing we just discussed about the diversified response.
I agree with that, councilmember Dugan, except for I don't remember why we had Internal Affairs Unit listed there. That feels like a little bit outside of the diversified response.
Yeah, that would be separate from the briefing. The briefing would be more the diversified response and the PCRTs and the social workers have that conversation together. You're right, I'm not...
I don't remember why we had...
I can tell you what.
I see these as two sides of the same coin, whereas the alternative response is the things kind of that we wanted to take off the plate or that had accidentally been delegated to police. This is, you know, the way to handle those that leads to de-escalation or leads to destigmatization of these interactions, whereas the other side was the efficiency and the actual work of the police department. And how do we correct things when they come up, which would be the Internal Affairs Unit issue? So for me, they're tangentially related or more than tangentially, kind of, you know, they're together, but one is like the negative space and the other one's the positive space in a picture, right?
And I can add to that, councilmember Pedro, building on what councilmember said, the original intent was about making sure that the, that there's a civilian director for Internal Affairs, which I think the council may have assumed would be outside of the police department. So that's, that's sort of the thing that, so there certainly is a civilian director for Internal Affairs right now within the police department, in the, in the police department's chief's office. And that's honestly where lots of police departments have their IU unit, I'm sorry, IA unit. But, but the question is whether the council would prefer someone exterior from the police department entirely.
I'd be interested in what other councilmembers think, but I don't feel at this time that I, I don't think it's a priority of me to, for me to try and change the way that it's being done right now in terms of where the Internal Affairs Unit is being housed. So I would be okay, I guess, removing this whole, closing this whole legislative intent, but understanding that a lot of what, the goal of this is going to be incorporated in the one we just talked about.
I'd actually like to leave it open, but deprioritize it while Chief Redd has a chance to acclimate and, you know, he's kind of in his first, like, getting the lay of the land. And if some of the concerns we were seeing with IA, especially as they arise, complaints arise from the police person's side, are mitigated simply by virtue of how he's organizing his department, then I'd be okay closing it. But I'd actually like to leave it open and just deprioritize it until Chief Redd has had a chance to do what he's going to do with organizing the department more fully.
So my straw poll just stays...
What is your straw poll?
That we keep, I would say that we keep open and follow the staff's recommendation on the police department's intents and include the briefing for the response teams, include that with the briefing of the diversified response teams that we previously just straw polled. So co-locating both those reviews in this calendar year. The social worker and the PCRTs.
The social workers and civilian response teams.
Along with the diversified response teams, because those two, to me, are overlapping and we can brief it, we can do one briefing at a time.
I mean, for the sake of efficiency, I think it is worth to simplify and we're talking about, we've been talking about efficiencies, about these alternative responses for years now. Let's just have one meeting to start and then we can fork it out if we need to like...
Exactly.
You know, so I will be supportive of like merging all of these conversations into one so we can at least start seeing eye to eye.
Okay, so I, what is the straw poll?
Putting it all together, one briefing, all together.
One briefing and agreeing with the tents of the...
Yes, one briefing to rule them all. Okay, then yeah, that's, I can get behind that. Okay, that's unanimous with councilmember absent.
Thank you. On to the Public Lands Department where there's just one legislative intent on the Gulf Fee Structure. There was a proposal that the Gulf Division provide, now I've lost it, it's up on the screen, though. The Gulf Division evaluates the possibility for discounted rates to reduce financial barriers for city residents. The Gulf Division says that because of their financial constraints, they, they would hesitate to have a special program, but that there might be possibilities for other, for some of the other existing rates that the Gulf, that the Gulf system charges to actually cover the bill, cover, fit the bill, I should say, for, for that financial assistance. So staff recommended it stay open, but another opportunity would be to close and complete.
Yeah, let's keep it open.
Okay.
You're good?
All right, yes, keep it open.
Okay. On to Public Services Department. The first is charging stations for electric vehicles. The administration did provide or did complete the Community Electrified Transportation Study in January and we, the council office has actually received a transmittal on this because they are ready to, to have a briefing on it. So that should be coming soon. Based on that, the staff recommends closing and completing it, but it's possible you may want to wait for additional research.
Okay, everyone's here now.
The staff's recommendation, close and complete it if we're going to get this briefing.
Okay, the straw poll says follow staff's recommendation, close, all in favor. And that's unanimous.
Thank you. And now we're back to that famous FY15 one on the maintenance of business districts. Staff believes that one should stay open, but we do ask the council whether you'd like to schedule a briefing with multiple departments, including Economic Development and Finance, to discuss this issue further.
Is that FY15?
Yes.
So help me remember, help me remember, this is to talk about additional...
I think our hope was to get some sort of standard menu that we could, where we could respond to various requests from different business districts that are looking for different things. So some business districts are looking for enhanced services or maintenance, other business district are looking more for like promotion. I think we were headed, we're heading, we're heading in a good direction because there's a staffer now dedicated to SAAs and economic development, although I believe they're, and they're still working on that kind of menu. So I think it's accurate to say we're making progress and I think leaving it open wouldn't be the worst thing in the world.
I agree.
I was just going to vote against it this year, just for fun, but I was going to vote against it just for fun, but, yeah, just to shake it up. No, okay, so I'm keeping, is there a straw poll to keep it open?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I will propose a straw poll to keep it open and I'll just add that I actually see more between councilmember Lopez Chavez working on the Harvey Milk Visibility Project and councilmember Pedro working on cultural districts and then different groups actually looking at creating new SAAs and us having a full-time person in economic development now dedicated to SAAs. I actually see this as more timely now than I ever have the whole time I've been on the council, so regardless of the fact that it's from 10 years ago, I think it's relevant today.
It's still relevant today.
Just 10 years.
The council 10 years ago is just way ahead of their time. So that's my straw poll to keep it open.
Okay, that's unanimous.
Great, thank you. In Public Utilities, we have the Jordan River Water Quality Item from last year. The idea was basically for, for the department to look into options for improving water quality. They did in fact do this and I forwarded you an email from Director Laura Briefer to, but it came late because it was accidentally, it was part of an appendix to the, to the, whatever we're looking at now legislative intent, but we, but it wasn't, it was accidentally not included in the mayor's recommended budget. So we just got it, I think, yesterday or this morning, and it was this morning and I forwarded it to you. So I think the bottom line, unless Director Briefer wants to tell me otherwise, is that they are working on it.
Okay. Straw poll?
Keep it open?
Okay. Unanimous.
Okay, the other, Jordan, sorry, the other public, now I'm getting tired, the Public Utilities Department is water usage by the city and the state, I'm sorry, the administration has stated that the most up-to-date information pertaining to this intent was in the City Property Water Use Efficiency Executive Report transmitted to the council last fiscal year. So staff recommendation before we knew that was to leave it open, but, because the council added an analysis of the water fee schedule as part of the intent in September 22, maybe the wrong date on that. But yes, so the question is still there, whether you'd like to open it or close and continue.
This is something that I, it seems to be still relevant to, to our city, the water usage and obviously, you know, the, some of the improvements that we have to make in our own parks and the cost of that and how long it's going to take us to, you know, to be efficient with our water. There is a lot of pieces to this that I am curious about. I've been interested in, I think most of you are probably tired of me talking about those sprinklers on, when it's raining and, you know, even from our own parks and sometimes from new developments and trying to find ways to incentivize the use of smarter sprinkler systems in our own facilities, but also within the city, much like we do with other programs like, you know, the mowing, equipment exchange and all of these other tools that we use to curb something, in this case, curb the misuse of water. So I really would like us to keep this open and hopefully see some more direction from the administration and us on how to tackle this issue. So my motion will be to keep it open, my straw poll, yes.
Okay, and now we're on to councillet intents, which is the last category. The first on that list is councilmember compensation, which staff believes you can close and complete.
I actually think it is still wrong that our ordinance ties our pay to the mayors. It is an inherent concern and I think we should be looking to move to other models that we found in the white paper that Cindy put together for us and fix the way we pay ourselves, even if we don't fix the rate at which we pay ourselves, which continues to be an inequity that I will not back down from no matter how many op-eds are written about me.
So straw poll?
I'd still like it to stay open so that we can change the method and ordinance by which we're paid.
Okay. All in favor? Okay. That's unanimous.
Okay, the next is rotating outside auditing of each city department and that remains open, is our recommendation.
And I think, just by way of update, our office has just recently completed an RFP process and has several firms on contract ready to go. So if the council has a specific, the way it would typically work is that the council as a group would decide a specific area of the city to look at and then we'd start to work with the administration on what a scope would look like or what timing would look like and then go from there and reach out to those firms that we have on contract now and see who has the best response to that.
Okay.
I don't think we need to, and I don't, yeah, I don't think you need to straw poll if, to follow our recommendations. And that brings us to the last one, which is Police Department Reporting Ordinance. The council staff, and Jennifer may have more to say about this, is working with the attorney's office to determine the best next steps for this item, so we recommend leaving it open.
Will you remind me about this one? Will you remind me about this one?
Jen?
I'm actually, I'm sorry to say, I'm drawing a blank on this one. I will have to see if someone else remembers and get back to you.
And I think there is some, some information in the, on screen or in attachment two. The idea is...
So 2021 body, body worn cameras and reported metrics. I, I would like to, so I guess it is related to that. I would like to keep this open, but also add the, the use of drone and other camera equipment that the city is expanding on, just to make sure that we are using similar metrics and similar standards for the sake of transparency and accountability to our city residents. And so if we can, if we're okay, I would love to add those two things.
Yes, we have that on the list for unresolved issues, so we have a draft started on that one.
Do you think it's, okay, we could choose to add it to this one, or?
I think, I, I'm just, I mean, based on the fact that I'm not remembering where this went, maybe we can close this one and just make sure that the new one reflects sort of the totality of what this council is interested in.
You okay with that?
Yeah.
Close? Let's close it.
Okay. All right.
That would...
You wanna go back to the Attorney's Office?
Oh, yes, yes. Just scrolling back up to it. All right, so the first on the Attorney's Office is Department Role Clarity in Ordinance. This relates to famous Chapter Two of City Code, beginning with the Sustainability Department, and I think you heard a little bit about that when, when you spoke about this Sustainability Department, whenever that was, a few days ago. The, the other part of this is that there are other departments who similarly don't, aren't mentioned in Section Two, so, Chapter Two, excuse me, including Department of Economic Development and the Public Lands Department, just because they, they didn't exist until fairly recently. So the staff recommendation is for it to remain open.
Thoughts? Keep it open? Okay.
So the second is pay parity among attorneys. The idea is that data could be reviewed to be able to decide whether the prosecutor, to determine, I guess, whether the prosecutors and other members of attorneys who work for the city, so I would assume legal defense, for example, do have pay parity. The council could request additional information from the Attorney's Office on their efforts to bring Salt Lake Legal Defenders and County Prosecutors into the discussion and/or, so our recommendation is to leave it open, and the other possibility is perhaps to somehow merge it with the Legal Defenders item that you discussed earlier. That may be more tricky than it's worth, though.
We, the pay parity, it was an issue from a couple of years ago, and we were able to, that specific issue itself, we were able to solve. Now, the issue of workload is different, and that's something that maybe, I'm more interested maybe on closing this one and updating the issues related to the LDA and the criminal justice portion, since I felt like this one is somehow resolved. So again, it's not to say that there's a lot of work to, to fund the Legal Defender Association and the criminal justice system correctly here. So, okay, closing this one?
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
The next would be the boarding building, boarded building fee with finance and can, as well as the Attorney's Office. The adoption of Ordinance 91 of 2024 basically has, has resulted in an updated boarded building fee. So our recommendation is to close and complete on that one.
Okay. Okay.
Next is the Open and Public Meeting Acts, or OPMA. The, the Attorney's Office reports that an amendment to Chapter Two, with some decimal points after it, is ongoing, and training in appropriate conduct is being addressed with board managers. So you may want to ask for an estimated completion date, or you may wish to simply leave it open.
I, I'm learning this myself in other parts of my life, about like due dates. So I felt like maybe we should ask for a due date to ensure that this happened, you know, and...
Don't we, don't we have this annual, as annual?
For us.
Already?
For us, we do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Didn't?
The boards, the commissions.
Didn't we already accomplish this? The confounding factor was that the loans that are being asked for often include private financial information that the public really doesn't have a right to. And so there is a bit of privacy that, it's not that we can just publish every loan application, and I swear that we worked through this. Like, I feel like we've...
I think the issue, the issue is that they're continuing to revise these programs, and so just having guidance from the Attorney's Office guide those revisions of the program as it relates to Open and Public Meetings Act.
Yeah, and the, and the intent also was to develop an ordinance that was an overarching, you know, piece of legislation for, from our city as a whole, and I'm not sure we got that piece yet. But we have done a lot of progress, made a lot of progress. It's just not quite finalized, I don't think.
And Mr. Chair, Cindy Trentman has approached the desk. Would you like her to?
Just to reinforce what you were saying, that the privacy information has been addressed. Board managers have been receiving regular training, and we're publishing materials in accordance to OPMA more consistently. But with regards to an ordinance amendment, that has not been completed for authority over OPMA boards, because they do vary between departments.
What do we, do we think that, what is an accomplishable deadline? I know that this is, might be hard to answer right now, but I wonder if there is a deadline that we can put on this so we can know when to finish this, this stage? Do you know?
I think we could put a deadline certainly before, I wanna say, April of next year, just considering a review of the ordinance that's ongoing.
Sounds like May 1 of next year. Seems like a great, a great deadline for this.
Right.
Yeah. Are we okay with that? Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you. And I believe finally is the, is a, another more mature legislative intent on decriminalization review of the city code. So the Attorney's Office is continuing this project in the coming fiscal year, and so the, because they realize essentially it's even more complex than they real, than they, than they knew initially. So staff recommendation is for it to remain open.
Cindy Lou, do you know how far into this we are?
Not as far as we'd like to report. It's a complicated process, and we're also learning and growing so much with the Public Safety Plan endeavors, and the conversation last week regarding the LDA, the Justice Court, and the Prosecutor's Office. There are a lot of components that we're realizing require deeper review. So it is ongoing, but it is not going quickly.
The reason I ask is just that I, this was a former council member's request, and I don't wanna, if we've started, like substantially started on it, I don't wanna like undo the work that's been done, but I also think that it's more of like a nice-to-have thing than a need-to-focus-on thing.
Can I speak to that point, then? It has not been addressed actively for over a year and a half. So the amount of work has been minimal, but it's always on our minds.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
You know, I sort of remember this conversation, and I'm not sure I was here or I was remembering the conversation from, you know, watching. But this is a thing that I also personally value, but it's also a very complicated conversation, especially now. But I, maybe if there is an opportunity for us to have a short meeting, to, even if it's just the little baby steps that we were able to make, to identify some of these things, whatever it is. It may just be a simple conversation that is very, very broad, to understand the issue a little better, to remember, remind ourselves what this is all about, and maybe, maybe we have interest on keeping it there or reassessing the need. I, I, I still struggle with some of the things that become criminal offenses, you know, that are in our code and that may not share the values of, of the city. And I would like that conversation to be had, but understanding that there, there are so many things that you're, you know, that the city can work on. So without moving any other resources into it, or significant resources into it, I would like to maybe request an update in small group meetings before we can make a decision to close it or keep it alive. So, okay?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. So is that, is that a?
Yeah. We're okay with that?
Okay, how do you feel? Great, everyone's great.
That completes it, I believe.
Nice, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Unresolved issues.
Mr. Chair, I'll pass around the big sheet, just a second. And I was gonna plan on sharing my screen so that we could look through on the screen what some of these numbers are. If you remember from last year, there's a revenue side and an expense side. Obviously, we have to adopt a balanced budget. I think the biggest update to share with you today is we have preliminary, yeah, actually, would you just wanna, just one, yeah? Or a couple? Yep. Thank you. Let's see. Yeah. The biggest update to share, thank you, Councilmember Petro. Yes, yes, so you'll see that the only one I've filled out is one that you guys have already straw polled, or, sorry, that you voted on as a result of the legislative intent relating to Budget Amendment Number Five. So that's the $14,000 for funding in arts, art in council districts, 2,000 per district, and so that's just a way of illustrating that puts you out of balance by $14,000. And so we would have to figure out, you know, likely it would be fund balance that that would come from, but if there were other cuts that the council wanted to make, you could also do that. I think the biggest update from today is there are some preliminary property tax numbers on the state's system. Now granted, they're preliminary, and that always gives me a little bit of PTSD because sometimes preliminary means they swing wildly. But it is in a good direction, so I think the likelihood that we will see more new growth than what is recommended in the mayor's budget is likely. I think the quantity of that extra new growth is not really known right now. I think it's accurate to say that it would not be in the range of like $10 million, but we're talking, you know, maybe in a lower range.
Can you help remind me, what was the new growth that was budgeted in?
In the mayor's recommended budget, there's 2 million. And so, you know, based on what we'll see from the Tax Commission, you know, let's hypothetically, let's say they, they share that we have 4 million in new growth, we would be able to rec, this council would be able to recognize an additional 2 million in revenue. The same goes for the judgment levy. We'll get the exact amount for the judgment levy, and that almost always is in excess of what's in the mayor's recommended budget because they use the December judgments. And so that's usually a much smaller figure, though. That's in the like $100,000 range, if there is any excess at all.
And new growth is ongoing money, judgment levy is one time?
It's, judgment levy is one time, but I like to say it's one time, but we do it every year. Our, our city does a judgment levy.
Well, once, once we capture 4 million in the new growth, we will always get that 4 million, whereas the judgment levy could be...
If the council next year decided not to do a judgment levy, it is technically one-time money.
Okay.
That said, every year since I've been at the city, the council has decided to do a judgment levy. Other cities are, I think the reason other cities are hesitant to do them is because they, it triggers a truth in taxation hearing, and so it could cause constituents to, you know, be angry. But I think our city has felt that it was money that was due to the city last year, and so it makes sense to go through the truth in taxation in order to receive that money. It's, yes, so this year, and, and it's exact. So we can't just set it at whatever amount we want. We can only set it at the exact amount of judgments that were granted last year. Yes, go ahead.
Jennifer, I've always wondered this, because, so the judgment levy is money we should have gotten, but we didn't. So it would have been money that we budgeted for in the previous year. But we never do a budget amendment to reduce the amount of expected revenue. Is it just because?
And in fact, you wouldn't want to, because then that sets your new water rate, your watermark, you know, that I call it, the way truth and taxation work.
There's a reason why we've never had to go, go through and be like, oh, we were expecting this amount of money, but we didn't get it. Is that just like vacancy savings and other things that would have dropped the fund balance or just a much bigger number than the judgment levy?
Yeah, and once you, once you aggregate it in the whole city budget, it's a very, very, very small amount. I'm trying to think what we, there was, there was a year where there was a very, very, very large judgment. I believe Delta Airlines was reappraised, or reassessed, or whatever the term, the terminology is. And that next year, the judgment levy was significant, which meant everyone's taxes increased in the city. But even that amount, you know, it was in the million-dollar range, wasn't enough to like amend the budget. It was just, you know, watching. So each budget amendment, you know, you see the line items and the revenues. Some are red, some are green, because some are coming in higher, some are coming in lower. Really, the only mid-year revenue adjustment I remember doing is the 2009, when sales tax was like 20% lower than budgeted. So that required both a revenue and an expense adjustment, so. So hopefully, that's helpful. There's several items on here that different council members have raised. So, Mr. Chair, I don't know if you have a preference for how we go through the different items, or if you want each council member to point out the one that they raised, or... I, I don't know if we're at the point of straw polling all of the items, because some of the items are placeholders based on if there is additional money. So not necessarily wanting to spend the money, unless there's additional money. But I didn't know what you had in mind.
Can I ask one more clarifying question about just budget structure? We have an intention within ourselves to maintain 13% budget, or fund balance. What is the point at which our bond rating starts to be impacted? Is it that 13, or is it 10%? I've heard Moody's is shifting on this.
Maybe Mary Beth would wanna come up and address.
I put up the bat signal, she's coming.
Yeah, in the past, 10% has been that, but I think it would be good to know.
I've heard Moody's was shifting that watermark.
It's interesting, we were just discussing this. Ben and Lisa and I were, morning. One of the things that, I just did a presentation about three weeks ago to some investment bankers, and one of the investment bankers came up to me and said, "I'm really surprised Salt Lake City is a AAA bond-rated city." And I said, "Well, why?" And he said, "Most cities of your size have dropped to AA because their fund balance has continued to drop." So I would be very nervous. I think that they're weighting the fund balance heavier than they used to. So as they look at our stability, I think that they look at that, and I think 13% is a fairly decent number to keep for the fund balance numbers, specifically because, you know, with our unstable economic times right now, I think they're gonna look at that as we start rating bonds.
So as I'm checking my own anxiety with acknowledgements that I probably carry the heaviest anxiety around this issue, is it irrational anxiety to fear falling below 13%, or is it an idealistic anxiety where I'm just not following a best practice? Or is it an idealistic anxiety where I'm just not following a best practice? Or do you need more time to pray about that?
I may have to think about that. I mean, here's what I'll say. When the council moved from 10% to 13%, I always want more, right? I always, I'm going to tell you, I always want more, right?
Me too.
I want between 15 and 18%. That's my comfort zone.
And I want a savings account with legislative parameters on it in addition.
But do I think that being at 13 at your bottom is, or close to 13, is a realistic, rational percentage? I think that it's a realistic, rational percentage, specifically because, as you probably don't know, but in my time with the city, when I started looking at revenues, general fund budget was $160 million in total. It's 512 now. Little bit scary for me, looking at things, because it was 160 million when I started. Now, that was 30 years ago, so, you know, give me that as well. But now it's at 512. I think you need to be cautious. As your budget grows, you're going to need to keep a larger fund balance number there because you're going to have to make that up if the revenues don't come in.
Really quickly, Mary Beth, I think it's good to point out that the fund balance percentage calculation right now does not include what departments may drop to fund balance at the, at the end of the current fiscal year. Typically, by the time I've seen like 4, 6 million be normal, although it was much higher, right, last year. So on page two of the staff report, just so that we had a hypothetical illustration, if departments drop $4 million to fund, that will take the fund balance percentage back up to 13.74. So I think that expectation of departments dropping money to fund balance in a way helps kind of keep it healthy, which is why sometimes there's an urge to spend every penny before the end of the fiscal year. But I think the people, the Mary Beth and Jennifer-type people are like, don't need to spend the money, just go ahead and drop it to fund balance, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Mary Beth, could I ask you to just clarify, so that I'm not hearing, because I'm maybe on the other end of the anxiety spectrum from Councilmember Petro?
I think we're the bookends. That's fair.
So, just so I'm not hearing what I want to hear, did you, were you saying that other cities our size, meaning larger cities, typically have a lower fund balance and that has caused them to drop to a AA bond rating?
That's correct.
Am I understanding that right?
That's, that's correct.
Bigger cities throughout the country haven't been able to maintain 10% or 13% or whatever.
Yeah, and most of them don't have a AAA bond rating, right?
And they don't have a AAA because of that.
I, I have a CFO, I go to a CFO conference, and there are very few cities that have a AAA bond rating of that. That includes DC, Seattle, San Francisco, San Diego, Houston, right? And I'm not saying that they're not AAA. Oklahoma City is AAA, but San Diego is not AAA. So I think that, and be cautious, because once you drop, it's hard to get back.
And what's the implication of dropping? Is it, I'm imagining higher interest rates on bonds?
Yes, it will be.
Are there other?
Higher borrowing.
Okay.
But, and then on the other hand, other side of the coin, you're saying that in your ideal range, 15 to 18 would be where you feel super comfortable in terms of?
Yeah, I would feel super comfortable 15 to 18. I think 13's a good start. Much better than 10, so.
When vacancy savings drop to fund balance, it's rational to view those, even though it's an ongoing revenue stream, as one-time revenue since that revenue is still allocated, correct? So for instance, if we know we have a crisis with the courts coming, the solution to that will be ongoing funding. So even if we have a lot in fund balance, that's one time, we still haven't solved a structural deficit.
Right, but you'll, you'll have several things going on at the same time. As departments are dropping money to fund balance, it's also possible, like we've seen the last several years, that sales tax overperforms, which then increases the drop to fund balance because sales tax also gets dropped to fund balance if it's, if it exceeds budget by the end of the year, right? So I think all of those things combine, and sales tax is an ongoing source, right? So not all of the inflows to fund balance are necessarily one-time in nature.
And you have to also realize that with Workday and the other stuff that we're doing in the ERP system and, and data we're seeing here, our vacancy rates could be going down lower. So that cushion that we had with higher vacancy rates is also diminishing. I mean, it just went from 5.5 to down to 4%. And that, that equates to a good chunk of money. And each, and then you also think about, one percentage of fund balance is about $5 million. So that's a general number, just because it's $500 million budget.
Yeah, in fiscal year '24, the expenditures that dropped were about $21 million. What Jennifer just said, 4 to 6 million, I'm about in the Jennifer camp. I ran these numbers when we were balancing the mayor's recommended budget, and I, I guesstimate about $6 million will drop. So we've gone from 21 million in expenses dropping, and that's one time, right? Because expenses are only one-time funding, to now six.
And what, and what that means is that, I mean, that's a good thing. It means departments are managing their budgets and spending the money that you've allocated for them to spend. And so there's sort of like a natural, like, you're never going to spend 100% of the money, and they're never going to have 100%, you know, filling. But obviously, having 21 million dropping to fund balance is a little bit of a wake-up call to say like, well, are we over-budgeted? Or is it just that the departments needed time to, you know, hire up, basically?
So is your contention, because as I, as I'm looking at what we're doing here and where we put this money now and how we do it, I'm thinking invariably, every year, we have had budget amendments because we have emergency positions we have to create and fill. They cannot wait until the new budget year, or so I've been told every budget amendment. Are you contending that as we manage the departments better and we, we start doing this, that that instance goes down? Because for me, it's, I'm.
It's, I mean, it's always, it's hard to say, you know, what to predict for the, the year. I think, I haven't seen a year where we haven't needed to adjust the budget in the middle of the year.
See, that statement right there puts me at the 15 to 18.
I think it's just the quantity and type of mid-year expenditure that's, yeah. Councilmember Young has a question.
So I think I'll just build on what Councilmember Petro is saying, because I agree. I think that as part of this conversation, it's not just what are we approving now, but what is the likelihood that we'll be approving things in the future? And I agree with Councilmember Petro that if it's a question of bond rating and fund balance versus like those emergency needs, like, that's going to have to be some high-level emergencies before we're like, yep, let's keep like digging a hole, you know, and ending up in a place where then we don't necessarily maintain our bond rating.
And what I will say is that the administration is being very diligent about the budget amendments in this next fiscal year. Jill and I have had several conversations, the mayor has had several conversations. We don't want to come back with a lot of budget amendments in fiscal year 2026 due to the economic uncertainty that we're having right now, as well as where our fund balance sits currently to date.
Can, can I just add that we have given direction over the last year to departments that we would not add FTEs in a budget amendment, but sometimes that's an impossible situation. The one caveat that I think we should give you is we do have departments that budget for overtime, and they kind of park money because they know they're going to have overtime in some areas. And this year, because the budget was so tight, we decided not to have departments park money. We gave them less money than they normally would have got for overtime to wait and see if they're really going to need it or not. And so we may be back to you for things like overtime, and we did that in an effort to balance the budget without.
And Jill, is the same true? I think I remember you saying something similar regarding the construction mitigation account, that, you know, using up the funds that are there before requesting more from the council.
And I'll just clarify one caveat. If the budget amendment is to bring more dollars in, I'm very open to that conversation. So please don't feel like that's off the table. And I appreciate that when we are bringing in funds, sometimes that does mean an FTE related to grant administration and pieces like that. So I don't, I don't want it to get confused, like, no, never. I understand, but I think we, I appreciate those conversations proactively with the departments, just so that we're setting realistic expectations. So thank you.
Just a quick, quick note. I think like, you know, if we go to the doctor and ask the doctor if we should be smoking a cigarette, obviously, the doctor will tell you not to, right? And it is not, there are ideal scenarios here, and the, the scoring of credit history, by the way, credit even, even to individuals is just wizardy, weird and strange. And it's as strange for cities to envision, and it's not only how much money you have in savings, it is a million things that are out of our control, like the stability of the state and the finances of the state. And so, in, in that way, we, there is a lot of weight put on our city. And I, while I prefer ideal scenarios, to have the healthiest of the, the savings accounts and, and, you know, all this money saved just in case. We have emergencies every day in our city, and we are doing a lot more with our money than many other cities have to. And it's unfair, and I keep saying this, but really it's unfair to our residents that we are placing this situation. And I tend to lean a little more on the side of spending more, usually to try to address the issues and the crises that we have in our, in our streets, in our city, while maintaining some quality of life. But again, I, I commend the work that your department does to try to keep us at that level of rating and to keep us healthy. And I know that you, you will raise the flags if you, if you see some of those. But certainly, we are in, in times of uncertainty, and we need to be careful on how we spend our money, so, thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Go ahead, because I'll just kind of, kind of make a comment on some of the TBDs that are here. So I appreciate this conversation, and I really, I think it's valuable to have this, and we got to keep on this on our front radar. I'm, I'm looking at two lines, number 29 and number 32. Increase general maintenance to city streets and increase transfer fleet funds for fleet replacement vehicles. Two very large ticket items. The streets is very large and the, but also the fleet is very large. And as deferred maintenance and expenses don't get better with age, and they continue to get higher and higher, so we got to stop the bleeding here on both these. We can't do it this year, we don't have the funding, but we won't be able to do it next year, too, because we won't be able to have this level of funding without other sources. Bonding is the one source of funding. There's probably others ways to do it, but we need to, and I'm looking at these as legislative intent, but I'm not sure if they actually need to be that legislative intent, because they're such a big issue, we should be focused on them without having, having an actual intent on them. But we need to look at the cost of funding our maintenance of our streets. It's going to get exponentially more expensive every year. That may be a hyperbole there, but, and the same thing with the fleet. And we need to take action sooner than later on the streams of funding for those two things. And I'm throwing that out there now as, can't be on this budget, but if we don't address it now, we're doing a disservice to our residents next year and beyond.
Would you be open to, would you be open to this, have this discussion? I, I think that every time that we talked about our fleet, I think all of us get a little overwhelmed with how much money that is. Every time I hear about our parks, deferred maintenance, I get overwhelmed to how much money that is. Every time I hear about other deferred maintenance that is sitting over there, we're talking about, you know, probably hundreds of millions of dollars if you add all of those together. And I feel like, I would like us to potentially have a more of a recurring discussion on how we are going to address those, because it seems to, that what we do every year is we, we throw a little money at it and try to hope for the best. It doesn't get better, like you're saying, although I feel like we have gotten better with age. But, you know, the vehicles, the vehicles don't, right? And the sprinkler systems don't, and the buildings don't. So I, I really would like to have a deep discussion on how are we going to address this? What plan do we have? It may mean that we have to start shrinking some other things in our city, or maybe ask our residents to pitch in more. But there has to be a, a strategy, and I would love to schedule a deeper discussion with the administration on how to handle that. You open to?
Mr. Chair? I appreciate Councilmember Dugan bringing, you bringing up those things. I, I agree that we have, I mean, one of the most alarming things I learned when I joined the council, that's when we were just starting to spend our, our road bond money, or we were like in the first couple of years of spending that. And I remember getting some sort of metric where I was like, well, at the rate we're going, it's going to take 100 years for us to get to all the streets that need to be fixed. And that was shocking to me. So I, I definitely agree that this is a need. I don't know, for me, that it is like the number one thing that I would want to address with new growth money if it comes in this year. I, I think the issues that we're hearing about with the legal defenders and the, the justice court, to me, probably rise a little bit higher than that in terms of urgent needs for us, if there's a capacity within the numbers that we'll find out in the next week. I'm open to the discussion about whether or not our, I should change that, that sort of prioritization. I will say, I've had a little bit of a hard time, I, I know I've heard regarding fleet over the years, you know, we, we need to replace our vehicles quicker because of the maintenance cost goes up and without just, I, I don't necessarily disagree with that, but I guess I want to dig into that a little bit more before I say, yeah, let's just replace all these vehicles that are over X number of years old. Because I just know for my own personal budget, if I'm willing to drive a car a little bit longer than it is nice, I'm saving money. So I just, I wonder, I, I just want to kind of dig into that a little bit more, especially with cars where we might be losing them to accidents as well. It's like, I would hate to have to replace, you know, I don't know what I'm saying necessarily, but it's always felt to me like, I, I know it's been explained to me that, you know, the, the quicker we replace them, the better it is for the city's budget overall. It just doesn't make sense yet, so.
Sorry, Fleet did like an intense analysis, like way more pages than you'll probably want to read, but we'll forward that to you guys, because it, it was recent, and that's exactly the problem that they were trying to look into and factoring in all of those different things that go into what things cost versus when it makes sense to invest, and so.
Yeah. And it seems to me like, I guess, if there's like a one time, we need to catch up for the fleet, but that's an ongoing expense, right? Because cars are always going to wear out, and we're always going to be replacing cars. So I, I guess I just want to think through that a little bit more.
Councilmember Young?
So I agree with all three of you. So I think the, the nuance to me, to Councilmember Mono's point, is like, how much money does it take to actually achieve a notable improvement in terms of our baseline of where we are? So like, let's say there's an opportunity for another $150,000. What does that get us in a fleet space versus a street space versus a park maintenance space? And if the answer is not really anywhere, you know, then I think it's a conversation about, okay, well, if it is a smaller revenue source, then like maybe it needs to go, even though those are large-scale issues, it's just not going to move, you know, the needle in terms of what's possible. At the same time, I will say, all three of those, I think, are large-scale, long-term needs that we have. And I know that the administration has been working on, you know, a capital maintenance plan in regards to what that looks like, and giving us as a council a sense of, okay, these are needs that we have, this is the scale of those needs, and this is how you might consider structuring resources to address those needs over time. To me, I'd be interested, like Councilmember Dugan said, in seeing those types of opportunities, plans and proposals related to these three key areas. And maybe parks is already in the, you know, capital maintenance component. But just to see, like, because right now, when we talk about streets as well as fleet, it just feels a little dire, you know, like, well, it's not good, and I don't know if it's going to get better. And you're like, well, it would be good to at least have the conversation around, okay, so if we really wanted to make the hard choices, what does it look like to get better, you know, in terms of having that opportunity? And then it can be a discussion amongst council.
Can I say that the fleet presentation was the most helpful thing I've ever seen in a budget presentation, where they presented what the ideal funding trajectory to correct it would be, what our it would be, what our current investment would be, and what a bad investment looks like? Like, I just appreciate having all of that information, because we know we don't have, we can't do it all at once. We understand that. But that I loved that. And I would really love it for all of the outstanding needs.
Okay. So, Councilmember Dugan, I think you had originally were maybe going to make a straw poll, it sounded like.
Well, I didn't, no, I didn't want to make the straw poll. I think the I have some legislative intents out there for, I think I first just went for the for the street side of the house. But you could just change the name and put fleet vehicles also in that same category. And kind of really adding Councilmember Puy's and Young's comments there on that. Because I agree, if you only got if you only have an extra hundred grand, what does that do to the street side of the house? If you can't add an FTE, and you can't add another machine, then it doesn't do me any good. But I could use it somewhere else. So, we need to balance that. And that's why those are sort of intent, because this budget isn't going to solve these two problems. And the only way and to solve these two problems, you're going to have to add FTEs. And that's a lot more ongoing expenses that we don't have at this point.
And we have a couple of draft legislative intents in the unresolved issue staff report that I could go through if if you think that would be helpful, Mr. Chair, or if you want to stick with, like, prioritizing. I think I heard some people say, if we have more money, here's where I would put it first. I don't know if that is a helpful thing to do. Obviously, it's hard to, like, resolve anything without knowing what money we have. But I don't know what you think would be most helpful.
Councilmember Mono.
I thought we were told that today we had to make that decision, though, because we're not going to have another time to discuss this between when we actually know how much money we have and when we have to vote on adopting the budget. So, don't we kind of have to prioritize?
I think that would be really helpful. I think especially because the chair doesn't want to have a super, we don't want to have a super long meeting on Thursday.
Thursday.
So, I think prioritizing would be helpful. And then.
Will we know final numbers before Thursday?
No.
We so like, even then, we won't. So, I kind of think we have to all share what our top priorities are. And if there's a majority of people that X thing is their top priority, we say we're going to put money into it until that point, right?
Yeah.
I don't know.
It's hard, it really is hard to prioritize when we don't know how much money we're talking about. And but I think that the approach of maybe sharing whatever, you know, more important things within this list, they're all important, you know, but how do we pick between these kids, right? And which one is the prettier one of all, or the smarter one, or whatever you want to call it. And I it's just hard. But when I am trying to balance all of these crises, LDA stands up to me, and the the need for funding to the Legal Defender Association, and the the increased workload, because we are creating, you know, some of this to happen with, you know, the police department and with the public safety plan and how its implementation. So, I if I have to, like, prioritize, you know, all of these things, I will probably talk about LDA first, because we're talking, in my mind, I'm talking about people's lives. And that's sort of is way ahead in the in the priority of things. And no one likes to drive over a pothole, but felt like we can survive a pothole. But, you know, when we're talking about lives, it's it's just to me more to more important. So, it is, all of these things are worth it, and you might have a different approach, and totally respectful. But if I had money, I will try to pitch in for an attorney and LDA as to begin with. That will be my my hope.
Can I, sorry.
Pete, Ron, and Dugan.
So, I 1000% share, and I think we are not able to kick that can down the road on the entire judicial branch and the need for investment there. Do you feel, I'm with you on this, but do you feel that it has to happen now? Or would you be willing for us to get more data and do a comprehensive judicial investment that that emphasizes LDA? Because clearly, their workload has increased disproportionately because of the way we're enforcing, like, within this calendar year. I I I'm with you. What I don't want to accidentally do is for us to do that, have a sensation that we did something, and then let other things percolate over top of it, and us be confronted with an even bigger crisis either next year or in the middle of the year. I I would like to be really strategic about gathering the data that we talked about during the hearing, and in a budget amendment, fixing whatever we need to fix, which is why I would like to park the money in fund balance with the intention to allocate it to judicial services with LDA as a component of it.
I mean, I think that is worth it. I just like, sometimes we overanalyze things that are very obvious. I mean, we we are creating, I mean, just the system is creating a jump on cases that is like 300 or 400%
Yeah.
higher. So, just based on that, it's very obvious that they need more assistance. And so, I'm open to some of that, if it gives you some of that comfort that we need to get because of the number, we don't know what the numbers.
I just want to be comprehensive. Like, I'm with you. It has to be done.
That's why I'm not advocating for any amount of money. I'm saying, if I had money and I have to divide this pie, I will probably divide it there first.
Yeah.
That's sort of, I don't know if that gives.
I'm in alignment completely.
How.
If, I mean, if I think if the council is willing to straw poll that, that would be really helpful. And then, I mean, in my mind, I kind of see it like a waterfall, right? Like, you fill up your priority one first, and then whatever's left can fill up priority two, and then whatever priority three, or if there's no priorities two and three, then it just goes to fund balance or something. I don't know. But that's, I think, how the conversation will have to be on Tuesday to just say, based on your prioritization, here's where the numbers shook out. Obviously, I'll share with you guys the second we get numbers. And if we get it before, legally, the State Tax Commission doesn't give it get it to us until June 8. And so, that means that's Sunday. So, that means likely Monday we'll get that information finalized. But like I said, there is preliminary information in the system, and there's nothing preventing them from finalizing it earlier.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Dugan.
This is basic question here. On line number seven, the one highlighted, it says, use of general funds over 10%, 9 million for funding our future, and we have 15 million.
That just means there's 15 million over the 10% level in fund balance.
So, over the 15, over the 13% fund balance, there's only like 140, there's nothing.
There is.
Zero.
There's negative over the 13%.
So, that that number is actually, because we wanted, basically, the conversation we had earlier, that should be, that 15 million should be zeroed out, because.
I think that legally, we we have given the council advice that 10% is the minimum.
Right.
13% is your policy. And so, legally, you have the option to spend fund balance above 10%. I mean, legally, you have this option to spend any amount of fund balance. But that that is a source of money to to, I think, earlier, Councilmember Puy and I were talking about, you know, sources of money. That is a legitimate source of money, in addition to revisiting
Right.
some of the new FTEs or.
So, but but if we're looking at two line, two, you know, the ledger, money in, money out, that 15, we've pretty much said, agreed to, that would be zero. So, if that 15 was zero on this on this sheet right now, what would be the, what would be our position as far as the general fund is? Because right now, we're at minus 14,000. What would that be?
I think
Is that?
you would have to spend some of that 15.
Okay, we do have to spend.
Or or you would have to revisit the new FTEs that are being added to the budget.
Okay.
Or you could revisit any of the other programs and any of the other departments.
Okay, so, all these other numbers below that 15 are using that 15,000, 50 million?
No. So, the way that, sorry, I should have oriented you guys, the the column in the gray is just informational.
Right.
So, I haven't plugged in anything from the column in the gray, except for that 14,000, because you guys already straw polled it.
Gotcha.
So, what we're trying to guess here is line number five and number six. And, you know, we're trying to see if the new growth and the judgment levy, which we don't know, if we had money there, can we address some of the issues that we have identified as a as a as a council and as a city? And that is really what we're sort of discussing. Potentially, we could go into fund balance in that yellow line and make drawings from that account, you know, to fund some of these things. It seems like we sort of already made one of those in some ways. You know, we'd already sort of decided to spend some money without knowing where it come from. But but basically, it's saying, out of these things, there are from line 14 to 56, can we, do we want, do we feel comfortable allocating some of these future new growth and judgment levy funds? And that's where I think my discussion is, I don't know if I feel comfortable of going on line seven and and spending, you know, any money of those 15. I'll probably like, leave it there, and maybe try to guess what we do with $2 million.
Oh, God, clarification of numbers.
Yeah, I see.
The proposed.
Just to clarify?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
The proposed lines on the very bottom, 52 through 55.
Sorry, those are just informational, so that you guys know exactly how much money is.
Those are included in line eight or nine or 10?
Those are included in line nine.
Okay, that's line nine. Okay.
So, for example, if you said, I want to fund LDA by not funding the clean team or the right of way services team, that's an option, because those teams haven't been hired yet. But you'd have to make that decision.
My fault, my number was wrong. So, I needed to shrink that that layer table. But yes.
Councilmember Mono.
Jennifer, do you know, okay, so we're not currently where we're at on this spreadsheet, we're a little bit below 13%. What would be the number to get us to actual 13%?
Um, I have that. It is 227, 228,000 to get you to 13%.
I'll just, yeah, I'll just share that for me, that the where my priorities probably are, are the LDA, the judicial system issues, and getting our fund balance back to 13%. If the judgment levy and new growth come in above what is currently budgeted. And then my second tier priorities would be public lands maintenance and construction mitigation funds. So, I'm just telling you that, so you know where I'm at. I'm willing to be swayed, but that's kind of where my head is at of of where I'd like the additional money that we might have go to.
And just to clarify, when you say the judicial system, LDA, I've heard two ideas. I've heard, add an attorney to the LDA. And then I've also, there, I believe, their request was two attorneys and support staff. And then, in order to fix the workload at the justice court, that would be a judge and five support staff. And then the prosecutors would be three attorneys and support and two support staff. So, maybe as we're talking through priorities, you could be specific about.
Amounts?
Okay. Or or what you mean, like, addressing just the LDA portion, addressing the LDA and.
And I think ideally, obviously, we'd like to do all of that. But that seems like a really high number. So, I think, to Councilmember Young's point, a little could go a long way in addressing just what the LDA is experiencing. And I don't know that I'd be comfortable, without further analysis, doing two attorneys and support staff. I think my level of comfort, before we do that next deeper dive, would be one attorney.
I'm just calling on myself here for a minute, and then I'll call on you, Councilmember Lopez Chavez. My two priorities are parks maintenance and LDA slash as the way Derek characterized justice issues. But for me, this is how I'd put it in chair vice chair. So, those are the two, like, stores that I want to go to. And it, depending on how much money I have and what I can buy at the parks maintenance store versus what I can buy at the LDA justice services store, is what is going to make or break it for me. Because if I can only buy one thing at this at at this store that isn't going to make a significant dent, but it would make a significant dent at this store, that's where I would prefer to shop. And so, I think, maybe what what we can do is if if everyone can state what, you know, two of your priorities, what they are, and we can see how much overlap there is, and if we can narrow it down to, for the administration and for our staff, depending on where that where that amount lands, what is the most good that we can do among these categories that we have narrowed down? Then we really only have to make, we don't have to make as many decisions. And the good news with that scenario is that, even though we won't be solving all of the problems of the world, we can feel good about the fact that any one of those decisions that we make is a good decision, because it's going to help in one of those areas that we've all agreed to narrow down. And we'll just do the most thing for our buck within that context. So, that's what I would suggest that we do. If anybody has a better idea, please let me know. Or if you don't understand my store's analogy, happy to explain that again. Councilmember Lopez Chavez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In my grocery cart, I would place noticing our justice system, I actually would like to fund more so the support staff and the excess judge, because the way I'm interpreting our justice system, and from the walk alongs I've done with Chief Red, as well as speaking with the LDA, is we're having a lot of increase of time to manage a case within the judicial processing of our court system. And even though we're seeing an increase of citations, I can appreciate the work of the LDA, but that doesn't actually decrease any time in the system. And it doesn't help us understand what recidivism is happening, or or what kind of settlements or rehabilitation is being assigned. So, I just have a little bit different perspective on that. That would be my number one. My number two is actually the increased overtime for nuisance issues. And that last year was actually a line item in our overtime. I'm getting communication from Chief Red to see if we do need that. But the number two, that's to deploy any time that there, for example, in the Central Division precinct, on the weekends, they are fully utilized and deployed, our officers and PCRT team. And so, my understanding is that that is any nuisance issue, civil cases, anytime there's an accident, anytime there's party houses, noise related nuisances, there's a significant portion, even in the District Four survey, I'm seeing citywide answers from residents that are having difficulty reporting with these quality of life issues. So, that would be my number two. And then my number three would be that overlap of general maintenance of public lands. Certainly, in District Four, most of our parks are not funded through the geo bond and don't have basic levels of services met. And I'm sure that's the same in other districts. So, that would be my number three.
Did you only get two?
Well, some people had four, so I'm going to say three.
Councilmember Dugan, did you?
So, I like your store, and I'll go back to my beginning. I really think we do need to tackle these street maintenance side of the house. But that is a big ticket item. So.
But yours is number one is street maintenance.
Number one is street maintenance. But again, if we don't have the money to move that needle in the street maintenance, I do, again, want to look at the the public land side of the house.
Okay. Councilmember Young?
Yes. So, I'm choosing a number one, and only a number one of fund balance. And my suggestion there is, is that by deferring any additional revenue to fund balance, it gives us an opportunity to then, instead of shopping without a budget, shop with a budget as part of moving forward. I am more than happy to entertain solutions, like related to the LDA needs. I do think it needs to be balanced in terms of what it looks like. And I also would say, even from my own perspective, I'm not comfortable, like, choosing off this menu, because I worry I would put together a plate that doesn't make sense for anyone. And so, if we defer to fund balance, and then say, with the intent of having the conversation of whatever we have left, then making an informed decision, that's what makes sense for me, and that is my priority. Thank you.
That was very persuasive.
I am completely in her camp and will actively vote against any other plan but that.
Okay, wow, okay. Coming out strong. Does anybody want to compliment Sarah's idea more?
I'm not opposed to it.
Okay. Do we have any opposition over?
No, I think that's, I really want to make sure that we are, you know, speedy about it. I think that is a great approach. I think that is the smartest approach. I, I think that is the smartest approach brought up to the table, no offense to anyone. I think it's just like, you know, just let's wait and see, and then let's make smart decisions. I, with, if we, the intent is to address this issue right after we know the numbers. I'm totally supportive of that.
Can we, though? Because can't we not actually do a budget amendment until the administration--
You can, you can initiate a budget amendment.
We can, okay.
And I think the other, I mean, depending on what is funded, I'm always hesitant to say, you can play around with the numbers on budget adoption night because it, it is really important to get the numbers right. And the more we change them, the more risk we have of getting them wrong. But if there are simple categories that is easier to add on Tuesday than, like, you know, I don't know, I can't think of a complicated one at this point. Day 12.
Hold on. Before we, I want to just hear, are we coalescing around this? Dugan?
Councilmember Young's?
Yes.
Yeah, I could coalesce on that.
Okay. Excellent. So, let's--
Great.
Yeah, I love that idea. Do we want to, does it--
Sounds like--
Add anything to that or, or--
Bag of donuts?
Build off of that? Yes.
I'll just say--
I think we will, sorry.
Sorry. To what Jennifer said about potentially we'll have the numbers by a budget adoption night, I would be a little nervous because I just don't know that I'm gonna get enough information between now and budget adoption night for me to know what Sarah, to Sarah's point, whether I'm making a plate that nobody can eat.
Yes. And we are, we are going to follow up with the administration about what, you know, what different levels of funding get you at different stores. So, we'll follow up with public lands on that to, to at least have that information because then you can add it in a budget amendment. And then with the LDA, we do have a legislative intent asking for a further study and review of that system, so intending to address it at some point in the future. Would you like me to go over the legislative intents right now, or do you want to go to the next item and move on from this?
Well, we are at the end of the time allotted for this item.
Mr. Chair?
So, yes, Councilmember Puyi.
Just quickly, I, there was an item that I added, they didn't make it to the list.
It's on my, it's on the staff report. I'm sorry it's not in the list.
So, I just want to, like, flag it there so you guys don't feel like I, you know, added it after the conversation. It is, it's a very small amount of $5,000 for air quality sensors. University of Utah has a program that installs air quality sensors all over the city. They basically don't have enough sensors on the west side, you know, which is, you know, where we should have a lot of them. And, you know, with a small amount of money, they can expand that program. So, I just wanted to put it out there. Yep.
And that was 10,000 as a placeholder. And so, if, if you guys did want to straw pull that, I could add it to the list.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry about that, Councilmember Puyi. It is in the staff report, but I totally missed it.
I was worried because I was usually the one who adds things for the last minute. This time I wasn't.
I know. I thought I had everything.
Thank you. And I want to thank everybody for, for coming and doing what we wanted to do today, which was to hash this out now as opposed to on Thursday or Tuesday. And then this will give us, yeah, this will make everybody's job, especially our staff, who hasn't really even had a break since legislative session, will make this a lot easier on Thursday and Tuesday. So, is there, if there's nothing else that anybody wants to, to add to this sheet, then we're gonna move on. Great. Okay. You had plenty of time to speak up.
And the unresolved issues staff report will have, and there's a discussion for upcoming legislative intents on Thursday. So, maybe on Thursday, be prepared to kind of wordsmith and send Allison any and all ideas for legislative intents.
Great.
If you don't see them.
How many do we close? Just out of curiosity. I don't know how many we closed, but I know, and that's why I'm--
The raise.
That's what I'm saying. I think maybe we should, let's, let's be cognizant of how many we just voted to not close when we're having our adding to it discussion. I don't want another 2015 on there.
Exactly. But it's also interesting where, do we actually need a legislative intent? We've had these discussions on it. The administration knows we have it. Is there a need for the intent? I mean, we've already stated the intent.
Unless there's a new one, not this, not this, not unresolved issues, but like, other legislative--
Yeah, yeah. Because some of mine, maybe we can scratch my legislative intents because we've kind of discussed them here right now. It's, and we've, we've stated the intent. Does it really need to put it in paper?
I don't know.
Yeah.
In my experience, we spend the most amount of time on legislative intents drafting them.
Right.
Than doing them. But that's just, there's exceptions, but, yeah. Okay. All right. Let's go ahead and do our break. Everybody come back at 4:30 for some board appointments.
So, we're gonna go ahead and get started with our agenda item number nine, which is a board appointment to the Racial Equity and Policing Commission. We have Alexei, preferred name Lex? Yes, come on up. Hernandez Needling, right? Okay, thanks. Nailed it. Lex, tell us a little bit about yourself, why you're interested in this position, and what, yeah, anything else that you'd like us to know.
Absolutely. Well, thank you all for giving me the time today to come here and speak. My name's Lex. I live in District Four, and much of my professional life is surrounded in health equity, as well as public safety. And all too frequently, with many of either the patients I see or the folks I interact with in my outreach, public safety and policing intertwined with policy become very, very apparent and very intertwined. And it's all too common, and that's, I think, an opportunity to be on this board will give me the chance to kind of bring their worries, as well as their recommendations, their voice, to help enact real change in our policing. I think advancing equity is a huge thing in policing, but also focusing on advancing dignity as well. Because I really, really have a heart for all the people. I've been fortunate enough to work alongside with, help, and I really do believe their voice deserves to be heard, especially when enacting important change such as policing. And I look forward to the potential opportunity to hopefully help influence this new budget with the new police chief, because I do believe with evidence-based advancements and intervention methods, this is a very important time to focus on that. So, thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Lex?
Yes. Councilmember Lopez Chavez. Just a comment. Lex, thank you for putting your hat and wanting to serve. I think it's an interesting time, too, just to reflect. We have new apparatuses like drones and thinking about how we come up with really equitable policies so that we're not overpolicing our constituencies and thinking about how we resolve some of the crises in our city related to enforcement or incident management. So, really excited to work alongside you.
Thanks. Thank you.
And Lex, what do you do? You referenced your, what you do in your day job or your professional life. What is that?
Yes, so I am a syringe exchange manager for a harm reduction organization, so mainly folks suffering, or not suffering, that have substance use and addiction. That's my day-to-day. I also founded and run a drowning prevention nonprofit for children who can't afford swim lessons. I used to be a former swimmer myself, and the only reason I learned how to swim when I came to the US was because someone gave me the opportunity to learn for free, and so I just wanna help push it forward as well. And so those are the two things I do, and I also love doing research and policy.
Great. Councilmember Young.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I really appreciate that healthcare lens. I think that we're finding more and more that individuals who may be like interacting with Salt Lake City Police or first responders, like, there's a healthcare component to it as well. And so, I really hope that you bring that knowledge and that experience to the conversations and help us as a city in terms of figuring out where does it make sense to try and braid services and where does it make sense to defer to experts in that healthcare space? So, thanks.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And Councilmember Puig.
Just wanted to say, I'm very excited to have you join this board and have your input. I just, I would say, maybe as another warning, not to solely you, but in general, like, there is, especially this board is a large one, and commitment to attending is important, because if not, there is a lot of issues with quorum and not being able to meet as often as they should. To not, because there are no meeting the minimum requirement, people get busy, right? And it's a volunteering position. So, I will just encourage you to do your best, and I know you have, based on all the things that I know about you. So, thank you for volunteering and serving your city in another capacity. I'm excited to have you there. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. So, Lex, we will place your name on our consent agenda for tonight's formal meeting. You do not need to be there in order to be confirmed, but you're more than welcome to join us if you'd like to be there.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for your service to Salt Lake City. All right. We've got another budget item. Oh, that's, you thought we were done? And that it was gonna be a board appointment, but no. That was just a secret, little board appointment, a little trick. So, this is more informational, but this is back to the budget. We don't usually do a division budget, but we are gonna do this year because it's Arts Council and it's moving out of one department into another. So, it's a special year for a very special division. So, get on down here, Felicia. And we've got Sylvia Richards, who's gonna introduce it. We also have, with Felicia, we have Laurel Cannon Alder, the Assistant Director for Economic Development, and Mary Beth's available, maybe, if we need her? Okay, great.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Arts Council supports and promotes arts, city arts, artists, arts organizations, and arts activities. For fiscal year 2026, the mayor's recommended budget proposes nine full-time FTEs and one part-time employee during festivals such as the Living Traditions. Two part-time and 25 to 30 seasonal personnel are employed through the foundation, and those positions are dependent on fundraising efforts and are not supported by the non-departmental contract. The budget proposes to transfer, as you mentioned, the Arts Council Division and their budget of 1.341,707 from the Department of Economic Development to the Department of Community and Neighborhoods, which is a reduction of $61,000 or 4.4 as compared to fiscal year The Arts Foundation receives a contribution from the non-departmental budget of $1 million annually. This year's budget continues that contribution plus, proposes an additional $25,000 for a total of $1,025,000. The funding supports the foundation's programs, including arts grants and various community programs. And the budget details are listed on Page Two of the council staff report, and the policy questions start right below that chart. And with that, I'll turn the time over to Felicia and to Laurel.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me? Okay. Thank you all so much for the opportunity to present the mayor's recommended budget for FY '26, and also some additional information that we've been asked to bring to you all. I also just wanna acknowledge that proposal to move our division to the Department of Community and Neighborhoods, which in some form we resided in in the past, and thank both the Department of Economic Development and Community and Neighborhoods in supporting us in this process, as well as our staff, and also our Arts Council Board Chair, Susan Rickman, who's here with us today. And I also wanted to take the opportunity to introduce our new-ish Deputy Director of the Arts Council, Laurel Cannon Alder, so I'm happy for you to all get to know her. Next slide. So, these are our three goals for today and what we've been asked by council staff to bring to you. So, we're gonna start with a general review and explanation of our proposed budget. We're gonna provide context on Arts Council operations and then review Arts Council projects and programs that we think have been of particular interest to you all, and we're happy to answer questions at the end. Next slide. Next slide. Oh, here, that's good. So, overall, we see a decrease in the budget of the Arts Council, and the primary reason for this is that we have expended most of, or a larger portion of, the Bloomberg Philanthropies' Public Art Challenge Grant in this year. So, part of that was expended in FY '24 and '25, and we'll see less of that go out the door next year. So, that accounts for most of the decrease that you see. With the transfer of nine FTE to Can, the total budget for Personnel Services is decreasing. You'll see a $50,000 decrease in base-to-base change, which had to do with staff that was coming out of this year's budget that was moved to a grant. And overall, the programs of the Arts Council are flat in FY '26, in alignment with the mayor's budget, with the exception of the ask to increase the contract for the Twilight Concert Series. Next slide. So, this is the request for the increase to the Twilight Concert Series. This year alone, we've experienced a 25% decrease in allowable capacity at our preferred venue, and we've had ongoing and compounding capacity reductions and fee increases. Since 2019, we've seen a cumulative 34% decline in allowable capacity, and we've had a 200% increase in fees since that time. So, we understand that that's part of a broader operational adjustments, but the reduced capacity has impacted our ability to meet audience demand, generate revenue which pays for operations, garner sponsorships, and deliver programming at scale. So, this would bring the total contract amount of the Twilight Concert Series to $180,000. Next slide. So, one back, there we go. Okay, so this is just a high-level overview, an explanation of revenue of the Arts Council. It is composed, the blue represents the Salt Lake City General Fund, as well as the non-departmental revenue. As Sylvia mentioned, that non-departmental is currently $1 million. The green represents the 501(c)(3) Foundation revenue. This revenue comes from a variety of sources, from grants, sponsorships, earned income, et cetera. So, about 70% of our budget is city-funded and about 30% from the nonprofit. This is in alignment with our historical trends. However, this can vary from year to year. For example, with our Bloomberg Philanthropies grant this year, our match to the non-departmental was 117%, so we think that's a great value for taxpayers. And in the last few years, due to a National Endowment for the Arts, American Rescue Plan Grant, our matched, the non-departmental, departmental was about 50 to 65% match, matching funds. Next slide. So, this is a detail of our non-departmental contractual obligations for spending. We have a contract, the foundation does, with Salt Lake City, and the different percentages are allocated to city arts grants programs. The remainder of programs for the Salt Lake City Arts Council, and then a tiny sliver for facility management of the art barn. Next slide. We also just wanna give you an update and make you aware of something that can impact future funding, the National Endowment for the Arts. Currently, the president's budget has proposed eliminating the National Endowment for the Arts. Specifically, we have a grant for the Living Traditions Festival. We had provisional approval for this grant of $30,000 and have not received any updates or our funds that we have usually taken in by now. So, we're awaiting any potential changes in decisions. Our state Arts Council also receives NEA funding, and should any changes occur to them, we receive trickle-down funding that would be impacted by the NEA from them. Seven known Utah entities have lost and had their grants canceled from the NEA, recently totaling over $155,000, and that impacts us because we are grantmakers to the community as well. So, we anticipate increased demand from artists and arts organizations in the community. Another consequence of the changes is the NEA has very strictly outlined that they won't be supporting DEI initiatives. Of course, our cultural communities are very diverse, very proud of serving them, but this year, we've already seen private sponsors react to this messaging from the federal government and pull funding specifically for Living Traditions because they are stepping back from serving these communities as a result of this at the federal level. So, that's important to know. Next slide. So, to give you sort of the full picture, there are other funds in the city that the Arts Council manages or executes on programming, and we're gonna come back to these, but I think it's important to give you the full picture. That's CIP. There's three different sort of pathways for CIP that come to us. CRA, art funding, both for public property and some on private. Bond-funded projects that may occur, public donations, other enterprise fund projects such as projects at the airport that may occur, or the public library. Other departments fund projects with their own budgets and come to the Arts Council and ask to execute on projects. And then, the cultural core and the blocks, that is captured within your budget that you reviewed, but it's part of the non-departmental and not in our division. And then, of course, any grants, like I mentioned, the Bloomberg grant that we had. Next slide. So, we just wanna kind of give you a little bit of a snapshot of what activities are funded by the city and non-departmental and Arts Council Foundation. And so, it's important to know that all of our programs are funded by both the city and the nonprofit. It's a blended funding approach, and all programs are funded simultaneously by both. And so, we're really proud to support and do the work to elevate the arts in our community, but we also wanna acknowledge that our operational structure and our budget is complex, reflecting the obligations that we have to multiple funders. And that said, we kind of recognize the important alignment and communication with you all, and we're gonna be returning to all of you this summer to have a more in-depth conversation about funding priorities and how we can better and reflect the needs of the community, and we're committed to being responsive to that. And we're gonna just very briefly talk about the different programs of the Arts Council.
Because this is my first time being able to speak in front of you, I wanna say thank you. One of the first things I heard before I even accepted the job was how supportive the council and the city are for the programs, and it's what I have certainly felt from the very start. We do want to, we'll go to the next slide, we do want to give you kind of a brief overview of everything. I know that you are, I see you at these activities, so I know that you know a lot of them, but maybe it's helpful to put these into buckets. The, we have, within all of our activities, there's a lot of crossover between different programs, so know that these buckets sort of slosh over to each other, or the stores, if you go back to the store analogy. But for performing arts, we just hosted Living Traditions and also the Busker Fest this last weekend. We're getting ready for the Twilight Concert Series. In July, we begin Mondays in the Park, and at the end of June, on three subsequent weekends, we, or weeks, we do the Jordan River Acoustic Music Stroll. So, that's sort of is our very lively and activated summer of performing arts. Next slide. The next bucket is our Finch Lane programs, and we, this is maybe the most diverse of the programs. We have our visual arts programming. It's really important for us to have a gallery, as some of the gallery spaces have become less available to artists. This is a growing, we see more and more applications each year for artists to show their work at Finch Lane. We have our Finch Lane Gallery. We have artist professional development, because again, one of the things that we see that we provide for the community is places for our young artists to get more sophisticated and to be able to present themselves statewide and at a national level. We run the Mayor's Artist Award, and that will be those we presented this year at the Utah Arts Festival. We have partnerships with a number of literary arts organizations, and those meet in the Finch Lane Gallery weekly throughout the year. And then, we also rent out the Finch Lane Gallery and do other things in that space. Next slide. We have our city arts grants, which as you saw, is a large percentage of our non-departmental funds. We offer general operating support grants, which are a bread and butter, and as Felicia said, are becoming more important as different sources of funds become more strained. We offer project support, and I can put a note in that unfortunately, we're seeing some project support offerings from other agencies dry up as funding sources shift. We provide an artist-in-the-classroom grant, and then we And then we also provide special funding, special one-time funding. Most recently, that type of funding showed up as some of our work with the federal funds that came in to support during COVID. Next slide. And then that's not all. We are involved in special projects and community engagement to try and do a variety of things. As you have heard, Wake the Great Salt Lake, we are really excited. You're going to be hearing more about what's going to be happening. I would say we're in the hotspot for Wake the Great Salt Lake, and there's more coming, so please engage with us and take advantages of some of the amazing things that are coming and some exciting announcements will be coming soon as well. We do stakeholder engagement studies and community needs assessments. One of the things that we see, our role as a city arts agency is to, we're really, we lead the state as the state, as the city arts agency in providing information. I worked for the state, and so coming to the city, I can say that we at the state look to Salt Lake City for a lot of the work that came out of this Arts Council. We recently participated in a community needs assessment on grant-making. We're always trying to refine what we are doing. And then last year, we were able to do busking in the ballpark. It was something that we were asked to do to act in the ballpark neighborhood. We are proud of what that delivered. Next slide. And then finally, we are offering technical assistance. It's kind of paired with some of the special projects that we do, but we are continually offering technical assistance to arts organizations and artists on everything from grants and applications to navigating civic, city policies and processes. We engage in improvements to city policy and ordinance. We just completed an overhaul of the sidewalk entertainer ordinance with planning. And over the last three years, our staff has served on more than 25 internal city committees. I think that's important to think about. Our small staff have really jumped in and worked with other city committees. And in 2023, we completed a major year-long National Arts and Economic Impact Study with Americans for the Arts. Again, from my previous role at the state, I can say that we look to Salt Lake City Arts Council with a lot of pride for the city participating in that. And then we're going to discuss our public art program in greater detail.
Next slide.
That's right, this, we do need to share this. So this is a visualization. We tried to help kind of give you a perspective of where our nine staff divide their time. So this is just a quick, a quick and dirty visualization of an estimation. Basically, it's based on budget allocated to each of these programs.
Next slide. Okay, now we're going to talk about the governance and operations of the Arts Council. And again, we'll plan to go more in-depth this summer. So next slide. So there are a number of guiding plans and priorities that guide our vision and mission. Of course, the mayor's plan in any given year. We're, of course, made aware of council priorities, any strategic plan within a given department, wherever we're living at the moment. We, the Arts Council has a strategic plan. We oversee, again, the cultural core, there's an action plan for them, and then Plan SLC. So this goes into annual planning for all of our staff as they're creating annual plans. Next slide. So there are three boards that govern and collaborate with the Arts Council. There is the Arts Council Board, which is the board of the 501(c)(3) nonprofit, which has multiple committees and various functions, from governance and strategic planning to grant allocation. Annually, all programs are presented to the board alongside their evaluative metrics and rap reports. Programs are assessed for their performance and impact, and programs that are ineffective or duplicative might be modified or discontinued. And the same is true of introducing new programs based on community need. Some recent examples of this is the long-beloved craft market. We were an incubator for craft markets 30 years ago. We don't see that need in the community anymore. We see incredible organizations like Craft Lake City, Many Maker Spaces. So we transitioned away from providing those services because we saw ourselves as an incubator, and they became duplicative. The same is the, true of the Brown Bag Concert Series, which was centered in the heart of downtown. We have a lot of local musicians performing opportunities in our downtown core, and we didn't need to continue those programs. The Art and Design Board by ordinance primarily makes recommendations for the mayor on public art commissions and artists. They also participate in equitable CIP distribution of site selection and budget distribution, as well as maintenance and deaccession recommendations. And the Cultural Core Board and Finance Committee primarily oversees the annual budget and fiscal responsibility of the block's programming. And of course, all the boards act as ambassadors in the community and sort of gather feedback and provide input on community needs for our city. Next slide. There's some legal and operational frameworks that we adhere to. Of course, our city ordinances for the Arts Council and the Art Design Board, our articles of incorporation that designate us as a legal nonprofit, the non-departmental contract, which governs the programmatic spending of the Arts Council with Salt Lake City and the foundation, the Salt Lake City Operating Agreement and Lease, which I'll go into more detail in a moment. And then something is defined in state code, which is called a governmental nonprofit, which we adhere to legally. Next slide. So to expand a little bit on our structure and context, we've been part of Salt Lake City, as you all know, since the 1970s. We were created by Mayor Ted Wilson and primarily as a grant-making agency. However, we think it's good to reevaluate the way we operate and what's happening. And in 2019, a consultant was hired and funded by Salt Lake City to evaluate the operational structure of the Arts Council and compare it to others across the nation. So there are essentially four structural buckets that the Arts Councils fit into. Purely government, nonprofit, hybrid is like this. It's a blended funding model. And dual is both a government and a nonprofit, but separate and distinct functions. We are a hybrid arts council. So at that time, after the study in 2019, the analysis came back that this is a really innovative model with unprecedented impact and the ability to really leverage city dollars. And the current administration of Salt Lake City affirmed this operational structure and underwent a process to implement what's called the Operating Agreement and Lease that was put in place in 2022 with an additional public benefit study that really defines the relation between the two entities, and that renews each five years. Next slide. So fun stuff, compliance and reporting. We have our own independent audit of the 501(c)(3). That is a component of the city's annual audit. We have multiple funders that we report to, including the county, the state, and a lot of private foundations that we have obligations to. And then we report quarterly on our non-departmental contract to the Finance Department. Next slide. Okay, now we're going to talk about programs that may be of interest to you all. And our recent kind of public art investments really reflect a balanced approach to public art, which is advancing our long-term capital projects while also kind of responding to the community and the council's interest in murals and temporary public art, notably lately. Within the bounds of our current parameters, we're just excited about thinking creatively and kind of stretching resources and forming partnerships and adapting processes to kind of increase the delivery of these programs and kinds of projects in the community. So we're looking forward to, the good news is, everyone wants more art. We want more art, too. So next slide. So to dive back into the public art program, components of this program can have project ideation and delivery, community engagement and outreach, collection management and maintenance, technical assistance. We work with a number of artists, organizations, developers, architects in the community, and special projects, like we mentioned, this temporary public art grant from Bloomberg Philanthropies for $1 million for temporary public art. Next slide. So again, these public art funding sources. CIP, there's three ways that these funds come to us through CIP. One is our percent, 1.5% line item for public art. Also, constituents may build art into their constituent applications, and other departments may build art into their department applications. So we'll see projects potentially come through three pathways through CIP if they're all approved by council. CRA art funding, this is primarily projects that occur on public property, but some on private as well. The geo-bonds right now with public lands, other enterprise fund projects is needed, and department-funded projects that are from their own department budgets and grants. Next slide. So over the last few years, we've been able to increase our capacity to execute on art projects. And conservatively, we think that increase is about 160% in volume based on previous project completion data. And we've done this by implementing a number of kind of efficiencies within the program, including direct commissions, donations of artwork, integrating into the design team, which can help us with efficiencies in things like community engagement and budget, frankly, with construction. We implement our public art pool, which is a pre-approved list of artists, which helps us fast-track projects for artists that have been vetted. We recently, consultant recommendations. We recommended a consultant to the airport to run a project for a project that we weren't unable to complete on a short timeline. And then we streamlined our contract and amendment process and restructured some staff duties. Some of the challenges that we do face within executing on more public art is project timelines are really constrained by limited capacity with legal and contracting. Approximately 50% of our projects have experienced construction delays, which creates kind of bottlenecks and reshuffling of project timelines. It's Tetris of endeavor, which that bottlenecking can kind of, you know, jeopardize funds that could potentially expire. And then new funding streams may come online that lack resources, such as staff or even board capacity to schedule it with the ordinance requirements for the board. Primarily, we're really often integrated into construction projects through CIP. And so our projects move according to construction timelines. So when funding is allocated, a project might not begin immediately. We might prioritize projects with funds that expire over funds that do not expire. But the majority of public art is multi-year funding. And so, for example, if there's a construction delay, we've had one at some sports courts at Poplar Grove, and we started the State Street Call for Walls with the CRA in its place. I'm proud to report in the past five years, no CIP funds have expired or fallen to fund balance within their requirements, and we have remained 100% on time for Arts Council projects. Next slide. Just a quick snapshot of this year. We've completed 20 individual artworks of capital public art across seven sites, serving over 39 artists. We announced four new commissions that are upcoming, so works in progress, and 13 works of ours are receiving maintenance this year. Next slide. This is a slide just of active projects that we're working on in the community right now. Specifically, I wanted to address the status of a few of these projects and their timeline that were mentioned in the CRA meeting that we're working with them on. Nine Line Funding is planned to have a Request for Qualifications go live this winter for artists. Japantown Construction is currently on hold, and when the Arts Council is awaiting guidance on that. But we're absolutely open to feedback if we want to implement multiple projects at that site. It is our recommendation that we do do a singular project and really make sure that we treat this project with the respect and cultural sensitivity that it needs. But we're absolutely open to looking at if we want to do multiple projects at that site. And then in our small group council meetings we had recently, we put forth some various options forward on North Temple, and we're eager to get some feedback on which options to proceed with those. Next slide. And then just a little bit of an update on murals and sort of a little bit more of what's to come in the future. We completed six new murals this year. We restored two murals, one of those, the second-largest mural in the state, and currently have three murals in progress. We launched that Ballpark State Street mural program with the CRA, so we anticipate 10 murals, and that's live to the public. Again, we proposed the North Temple mural program. We've launched all the Wake the Great Salt Lake temporary public art projects. Some of those are murals. There's 13 total projects. And then we've made a carve-out for murals specifically in the City Arts Grants Program. And so four of those six I mentioned before are from that funding stream. And we've also, we've also partnered with other city agencies, as we've mentioned before, with the facade improvement program to ensure that murals are an eligible cost there. We sit on the committee for Love Your Block and help in marketing and promotion of those programs. And really exciting, in a recent KSL article related to the new mural on the Astro Tower, which is the largest mural in the state now, besides, this is the second-largest we restored this year, that they credited the Arts Council to using our public art pool for that call and our partnership for technical assistance on that process. So free, free credit for us there. So just in conclusion, we hope this presentation's kind of illuminated some of what we were hoping to communicate to you. And we're looking forward to kind of creatively leveraging resources in the future and continuing to deliver great art and more art to our community and coming back to have a more in-depth conversation. We're happy to take questions.
Okay, Councilmember Petro.
I really love that your devotion isn't just to visual art. When we have arts councils, it's really easy for musicians, poets, performance artists to feel left out because we exist in time, not just in space. Do we have any metrics on how we're engaging people? What strategies are most successful for getting eyes on those programs, those sorts of things?
Say that in a different way. Do we have metrics on how we're engaging them?
The audience development piece, I know as a lot of our performing artists, audience development is the most difficult component for them. So in addition to us being essentially a patron to their craft, the audience development also is incumbent upon us to some degree, I'm imagining.
Sure. One exciting metric about that that you'll hear from soon in July for the block's annual presentation is we, audience development is a huge part of that program. And we saw the highest audience development numbers that we've seen in recent years in post-pandemic. So we see a high increase in that. We really look at audience development as, you know, trying to serve both emerging and established artists. And so through a variety of different avenues, whether that's marketing or hands-on kind of work with, with communities. I mean, of course, we track metrics of who the artists serve. We track how many applications we receive. We track who's a first-time applicant, who's a first-time recipient. So a lot of it is, is who is the audience and how are they finding out about us? And we do have various evaluations across programs. So yes, we have some data on that.
Yeah, I'd love to see that being used to make sure that we're getting bang for our buck on the performance, since those are so time-bound. And a mural, you can drive past any day, but the performance, you either catch or you don't. And then you mentioned that everything in the Arts Council is, it's a mixed funding model. So everything is funded simultaneously by both routes. Does that mean that you have a one-to-one match in private fundraising?
No, there's no match required. Like I mentioned, our historical trend is 70% city funding and 30% foundation. And other years, that may vary. Like this year, we matched the non-departmental 117%, exceeded it. Like this year, we matched the non-departmental 117%, exceeded it. In recent years, it's been 50 to 60%. So there's not a required match and really, you know, the definition of a governmental nonprofit is that the government has a controlling interest. So it's typical for that city funding to be higher.
So a safe assumption for us as we make policy and budget determinations is that anything that we're funding, we are funding at 70%. There is a 30% private contribution that's supplementing it?
That the foundation earns from different sources. Yeah, that's a pretty close trend, but again, it can vary from year to year depending on if we procure grants or things of that nature. Yeah.
And the final thing is if you need sponsors to be reality oriented to the reality that minoritized populations make up to 30% of the population in this state where we're the smallest and leaving that economic power on the table is mindless nonsense, let alone terrible policy, I'm happy to be the person who delivers the message for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Pui.
I was looking at one of the slides, I'm hoping that we can get clarity. It's the FY '25 Staff Time Programming Allocation that you presented. It's just green bars, lines, there's no numbers. So I would love to have some numbers on that because it goes back to one of the questions. And it's, you know, I mean, the performer, the performing arts tower goes a little higher than the other, the public art tower, than the art barn. So I really, this needs clarity. It's not appropriate to what I'm trying to understand or for the public. I would like to know a little more definitions of what you mean by outreach and, you know, what is that? Are you talking about reach for public events and performing events? Are you talking about like talking to neighbors about what they want to see in the neighborhood? It makes both. I want to know where that goes. And so just a little more definitions on all those pile, on those towers, green things and numbers on top. That will be very useful for me.
Yeah, we're happy to come back with that.
Then, and I, you know, I will share this again and I, and it is not a view on the pieces of art that we have done as a city that, you know, that your division has led, which incredible pieces that make you think and make you, you know, push your emotions. And some people hate it, some people love it, and that's what art is, right? And so in that sense, I felt like it's, some of those individual pieces are successes. I think overall as a division, we're failing. And let me tell you why. You know, there is this, smaller cities in Utah, you know, are doing incredible amount of work, amazing work with murals, for example. And I'm not talking only about South Salt Lake, which is our neighborhood on the south, but we're talking about, you know, Mid Bell and we're talking about Provo, you know, doing dozens and dozens of murals every year in public art. And then, you know, I also hear from other departments, other divisions and members of the community that the Arts Council is a funnel where nothing goes through, that it is very structured, that nothing that doesn't fit with the policies that the Arts Council has decided to implement makes it through. And that is something that I hope that we have an opportunity to discuss because I'm hearing it from the same building that you have offices. And people here in this building are saying that nothing is happening here that they might not want to deal with trying to get a piece of art worked out because it's not going to happen. And I personally had that experience when bringing about three different issues to you. And the response has been, it cannot be done. Ultimately, it was impossible. And this mentality of it's impossible is problematic to me. And I really want to give you and your department and your division the benefit of the doubt. I'm excited that you're moving because sometimes creates newer synergies and new connections. But I am very focused on the division. I, being the division that has almost the largest staff and funding in the state and underperforming as far as how many pieces and how easy and approachable is. And I actually had a community council this week telling me, without even me seeking for feedback, the complications to interacting with the division. It is too many things happening and I have some questions and I would love to get to the bottom to them. One of those being what portion of your budget is split between events, concerts, and then public art? And then maybe an explanation on, you know, how your artist department compares with other cities and, you know, their production, how much is yielding to the public? And, you know, how many pieces of art were installed last year, you know, in our city? And how much money we spent on them? Those, I know that you went through some of that, but I felt like going through all those questions ultimately would help me understand if some of those concerns are funded or not. And what I see, some of these amazing projects that you mentioned, what I see is RDA or CRA funded projects that added additional energy and they ended up happening faster. What I see is developers that they needed to meet their art requirement and they were able to partner up with the city and were able to make those happen. But what I don't see is the division itself, you know, the pieces of art that all the divisions in the state are able to produce. So I'm looking into some answers to that. I'm excited for the changes that you and the administration is pushing. But I'm hyper focused to see more. And the feeling it shouldn't be, it cannot be done, the feeling should be to us, I need more money for this, this and this, or I need a policy change for this and this. I heard from four years about the issue of murals and how it doesn't fit the definition of the ordinance or the state pieces. It seems like other cities have addressed that issue before. We seem to not be able to unlock it. So all of these little pieces of questions are created a situation where I really would like to have a deeper discussion. And I'm excited to have those discussions and hopefully we get that graph a little more accurate so I can answer some of my questions.
Sure. We'd be happy to come back with answers to some of those things.
Anyone else? Oh, Councilmember Dugan.
Thank you, appreciate that. You know, the Twilight series has always been a big favorite of the city and it, you know, we saw some big numbers and then you kind of got, were restricted on your capacity. And what's the, where are we looking in the next couple of years as far as venues and locations and projects?
Yeah. So last year, we piloted Library Square and will be just doing more shows there this year. We have explored with our public lands department, different parks of which we've been in before. Our intention is actually not to grow, but just to really be at a stable size. So I think we're open to different, but we have explored a number of venues and I think we're really close to a stabilization point. Yeah.
I'll just add that I think that from what I've seen, that a lot of the programs that the divisions executing are going really well. And I really appreciate all the work that goes into all of that. It's, for me, it's more of a question of, you know, in our oversight role, like are we making sure that, let's see, that we have a clearer understanding of what is a reasonable like output for what we're tasking you to do? And are the resources that we're allocating commensurate with the output that we're expecting? And then I think that on the murals question, you know, I've also had, like wanted to see more progress there, but also we had a good conversation and I think maybe what was envisioned or what was communicated earlier to the division was much more complicated than what I was thinking about. So I hope that we can find a way to kind of like right-size those discussions. And so, yeah, I look forward to that opportunity. And then this additional funds that we're giving you for art, you know, smaller projects in our districts, I wonder if that, I feel like that is kind of similar to the murals conversation. I don't necessarily want it to turn into a much bigger thing than what we're asking for, but I also am open to hearing like, look, there's just not a year and this much funding is not enough time or money for us to produce the product that you're asking for. I'm totally open to hearing that. And, you know, I suspect that that could be the case from our earlier discussions about the murals. But yeah, so I would like to be part of those conversations too. But I think the areas where the department has been like tasked with certain things I think are being executed well and it is an ongoing thing, just like the, just like Twilight, where Twilight has kind of like ballooned and we've had to cut it back or Twilight has kind of gone in a different direction. And, you know, I think we didn't even do it for one or two years and then we took it back. It's an ongoing thing, I think, to try to manage.
Right-size.
Yeah, right sizing everything. So.
I think we have some good ideas from our conversations that we had a few weeks ago just about like follow-up and what you all might be looking for and blending that with community needs. And I think, I think we have some good ideas coming.
Great. Well, I'll look forward to hearing about that. Councilmember Lopez Chavez.
I just want to, you know, really point out, Life on State was a really successful project in terms of bringing neon art and seeing that inception come from, all the way from investigating with our community members to looking at the historic placemaking that came from it, such as the Paper Moon object. And I see that as a great success. I think what helps me understand is timeline scope of these projects. Oftentimes, I'm not understanding how much time is being utilized. We have nine FTEs in this department. That would really help me understand how are the nine of you collaborating? And I just want to say this, I'm really excited to see you move into CAN. My hope is that we can create some cost savings by working with the departments that are also helping plan and develop new structures in the way Arts Council can work with either developers or other types of property owners that want to insert art. I think there's some intent and over this past year, we've had conversations of lots of private property owners wanting to develop public facing art or doing it themselves. I see lots of examples of this, whereas at the Engine Block, they installed engine blocks, baseballs. To me, that's an example where the city could have stepped in to help facilitate it instead of burdening the private property owner. I'd love to understand how we can, again, cut down on time increment that's utilized in the planning process of it and that's more of the management process and work with these public entities that could produce the proper operational capital needed to fabricate, install, secure, and to be the long-term steward of these objects, whereas this might encumber our budget. Another example of this is the old Moose Jaw Building in District Four. Another beautiful example where they took an old, you know, steel rebar from a historic site in Utah and moved it there to tell these histories of Utah and to tell the history of District Four. So right now, as a council member, it feels like I'm relying on these private property owners to tell the history through art and placemaking versus the Arts Council. And I'd love to just better understand, maybe it's a lack of information I don't have in front of us, but my hope is, and I want to thank Councilmember Pui, he really helped me digest this to how could we help redirect the Arts Council to try to uncover these private-public partnerships that otherwise haven't existed in the past?
Yeah, I, we work with the developer you're speaking about in the Engine Block and do a lot of technical assistance. I do think there is a role for the private sector and their voice and direction is important. But I think there are many public art models nationally that are more of a blend of private and public funding. And if we make a decision together to do less of our process and maybe more of a process facilitating other community members, I think that's something we can look at. There's a lot of different approaches. We're often, again, beholden to construction timelines on most of our projects, not always. We also do, I mean, there's many steps in the public art process, which we've talked a little bit about trying to streamline and getting those in front of our board for the appropriate approvals, but I think we have some flexibility within our ordinance and I hear that projects are taking longer than you'd like them to and we want to look a little bit more closely at those timelines.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. I think that, you know, your willingness, at least right now, it's encouraging to me. And I'm excited. I also would like to point out that, you know, the art, the art collection as it's shown on the website is outdated by years. And it is not encouraging to see that, you know, your department hasn't updated the art collection on the website for years now. And even pieces of art that we decommissioned over a year ago are still showing us, you know, pieces of art. And I, you know, I really encouraged by the desire for more art. I felt like we are in tune with that. And, you know, if you showed, if you've seen my trend since I joined the council and if you come to my house, that is, you know, I think I need to move out because I'm putting too much art in it. And I value art and I really want us to see more. And that is the overarching goal here. And I hope that we can have these conversations a little more in depth. I'm working on potentially requesting a performance audit and a council audit to the division so we can find those synergies and we can find where maybe our expectations are wrongly placed. And then it might indicate to us if our expectations are X, that we need to fund that. Maybe there's a funding thing, maybe there's a policy discussion about, you know, how do you make it to be an approved artist for Salt Lake City, which is many other cities don't follow? And, you know, how do, who gets to decide what those pillars are to be able to produce art for our city? And those are the questions that I'm looking for that may hopefully yield more pieces of art to fulfill, to quench that hunger that many of our neighbors are seeing. So thank you for the willingness.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right. I don't think we have any other questions. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to... Oh, that was the, well, other, okay, standing items, that's where we're at. I do not have any report from the chair, vice chair, do you have a report?
I don't.
Okay. Council Executive Director. Okay. So our next item is a closed session related to both city council and CRA board business. We'll keep our work session open as we convene as the CRA. So welcome to the June 3, 2025 Community Reinvestment Agency Board Meeting. The CRA and council meetings will be adjourned for the following closed session. We will reconvene at the time of 7:00 PM for one meeting. I'll now ask for a motion to go into closed session.
As both the CRA board and city council.
Mr. Chair, I move that we enter closed session as the CRA board and the city council for the purpose of discussing advice of council and a strategies, strategy, strategy session to discuss pending or reasonably imminent litigation.
Second.
And the motion from Councilmember Mono and a second from Councilmember Pui, is there any discussion? Seeing on, we'll go ahead and roll call it Councilmember Young.
Yes.
Pietro.
Yes.
Mono.
Yes.
Pui.
Yes.
Pui.
Yes.
Dugan.
Yes.
And Lopa Chavez.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. That is unanimous. We will be in closed session. Oh, are we gonna, should we grab food first? Oh, you might not be here. Never mind. Sorry.